Yes, we're ready. Good morning. We'll start the Gold City Meeting for January fourteenth. And first up, we'll do introductions. I will go around the room first and see who's joining us online. Pat Malone, Commissioner and Vice Chair and running the meeting this one.
Dave Shepherd, Commissioner.
Rachel McInney County Administrator.
Ryan Dawson, District Attorney.
Greg Mann, CFO.
Gregor Assistant County Administrator.
Tom Warr, BUC.
Eric Mylett, Board Record.
Mark Fajowski, Board Commissioner's Staff.
And who's joining us online?
Mariah De La Vega, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner. Quick question. I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you guys see me or no?
No.
Okay, my camera is not working. I will. I'm going to jump off and try to get back on.
Okay. Anyone else online?
Maggie Lynch, Benton County, Benton County Citizen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rogers, Under Sheriff.
Your mic is not on. Under Sheriff Rogers.
I think.
It wasn't just me, though.
Oh, okay.
Sheriff Rogers is joining us from space.
All right. All right. Next up, review and approve the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions?
Not at this time.
All right. If I don't hear any objections, I'll consider the agenda approved. Hearing none, are there any announcements?
No announcements at this time.
Okay. And we'll go into new business, four point one. Consideration of letter of support for funding City of Adair Village wastewater infrastructure capacity expansion. Rick Greger.
Thank you, Commissioner Malone. So last week, as you may recall, all three commissioners received an email from Pat Hare, a city manager for Adair Village requesting a letter of support for funding that the city will be seeking, well, seeking from just about anywhere that there are opportunities, but more specifically, the state legislative session is soon to get started and there's a focus particularly through the Association, excuse me, League of Oregon Cities in relation to requests that support all water facilities. There's a big contingent focus on that during this upcoming legislative session. So there are clearly some opportunities. You are all familiar with this project. Commissioner Shepherd, I don't think you were at on yet, but there was at the last city manager meeting, a presentation given by Pat Hare from the City of Adair that did a little bit of a recap of the whole community development plan. I can't recall if you were sitting in on that one or not, but it was his virtual presentation of the plan specifically around some downtown development through their expand, their, and then the expansion they've done on their urban boundary on putting more housing in. Clearly, the city has talked a lot about how they could do a lot more with the current opportunity if there was adequate water treatment facilities. So this is a pretty expensive project. I think that's obviously the one of the biggest challenges, ten, twelve million dollars that could be looking at. And obviously, as we all know, prices could be changing in the future as it relates to cost of steel and other things. So clearly, that's always a moving target. However, I think it's also evident that with our discussion around housing, a huge need in our region within the county, this is a great opportunity for a project that will bring a lot more housing. Obviously, for employers, that's an important thing as well. So overall, this is again, an area that I think, you know, would be a great support. It's got a lot of attention from the governor's office. Actually, this Thursday, the governor's solutions team is going to be meeting with Pat just to further discuss this. We also will be inserting CFM to help where we can in terms of advocacy, in terms of federal dollars that may be available. I think we heard from CFM last week when they were here, they thought this would be a great competitive project. So staff recommend your support for this letter. It is drafted for you within pages 10 and 11 of your packet. There's also included on pages eight and nine, a little bit of a background sheet that the City of Adair has created, just to give you a little bit more specific information. So I ask your consideration for this, and if it is approved, I'll probably be quickly moving to get your signatures because Pat needs to put it in tomorrow to meet deadlines. So answer any questions you might have.
Just want to say that makes a lot of sense. Love to support. I love to get the state fund or other outside entities to fund anything generally, and the supports the need for housing in our region. So very supportive of it. And I'm glad that Pat's out there looking, looking for money as well, that they have the capacity to go out and give money. So that's great.
And to make this perfectly clear, this is a Adair Village project that Benton County would be supporting.
Correct, correct. We are not advocating here any way. Dollars would flow through the county like we have seen in other type projects. This would be us supporting Adair Village for a some form of obviously appropriation, as we've seen through state legislative processes, but there are obviously, I think with a project like this, it's going to have to be a myriad of different resources to make it happen. Again, this aligns with a lot of the things you've all talked about, a lot of the values, and it's exciting.
I did not know about the deadline tomorrow. I had a nice conversation yesterday with the Pope County Commissioner and I advanced the idea of Pope County Commissioner signing on to a letter like this to show it's not, it would affect housing in Adair would affect the whole region.
I think Pat, Pat is working with the League of Oregon Cities. They're sort of, it's kind of being pushed through them. However, I would suggest, and we've been talking to Pat, there are other avenues to get there as well. There's obviously representatives and senators that can carry projects. I think we also know there's the capital funding process. So we've been giving him information and encouraging him to kind of go through that route. I say all of that because I don't think it's, it's not too late. I think any letter of support can be provided as we need through the session. So happy to also, once you have approved this, to send that on to whomever at Pope County would maybe be interested in modeling what we've done.
Okay, I, I, this seems like it's not just a Benton County benefit to Benton County. It's more, more regional than that. People that live in Adair Village work, I know in Salem and other parts of Pope County. So I think that would make sense. Commissioner Wise, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. I support this letter. I just have a minor change to propose in the wording. So in the bolded title, the re infrastructure funding support for, I would suggest that we add the city of Adair Village. And then again, in the first sentence, we urge your support for the city of Adair Village. And then after that, I think it's okay to just refer to Adair Village. Minor, not a big deal, but that just makes it very clear that it's the city of, which I'm sure they'll know because it'll be on the application, but that's just my suggestion.
Good to stay consistent. Yeah, they are a city.
Well, and that was one of the questions with my discussions yesterday was, are they incorporated? And yes, they are. In that, in this context, that's helpful. Dave, anything else?
You're looking for motion?
I, I would entertain a motion.
I move to move to approve this letter of support with the changes suggested by Commissioner Wise.
Okay.
Dramatic pause.
Commissioner Malone, I was just gonna say with your approval, I will ask Lindsay to make those modifications and I'll probably circulate it here shortly since Pat needs it. So probably put it around the table for your signatures.
It's been, we can second it. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Great. Lot going on in Adair Village. Continuing to go on. Next up, twenty twenty-five proclamations and events scheduled. Maura.
Thank you. Excuse me, Commissioner Malone. Good morning, Commissioners. Just a little history on this issue real quick. You, these two of our Commissioners will likely recall that back around the summer of twenty twenty-two, board staff worked with P, with the PIO to develop ways to make the proclamations program, if you will, more meaningful for our community. And some of the decisions that the board made was to actually read some proclamations and put others on the consent calendar. And that we would adopt sort of an alternating schedule so that a variety of proclamations throughout the years would be showcased, both with a reading and if the board or staff were interested in some type of a small community or, you know, interested, you know, people who wanted to come to us, you know, a pre-board meeting sort of reception. So the decision relative to the events portion particularly is just, it's kind of just been a, you know, very loose and just, oh, let's kind of have an event, you know, this is for this proclamation that would be a good idea. So I'm here today to ask for your direction regarding the proclamations that you would like to have specifically read on the agenda this year versus those you'd like to have on the consent calendar. I'd also appreciate a direction on any proclamations where you would specifically like to have a community reception prior to the board meeting. The reason for this is we want to, you know, be able to, you know, allocate funding appropriately. We haven't previously budgeted for this, but we would like to. And just make sure that we have dedicated funding for that. And the other thing is if we can, having an advanced schedule helps us also schedule readers who are invested or work in the area that the proclamation covers, just in order to maybe showcase the issue or the circumstance a little bit more. So purposes, ask for directions so we can plan effectively, execute the events that the board would like to showcase and get some general guidance about what an event looks like in terms of, you know, financial resources that's acceptable to the board. The worksheet that's on page sixteen of the packet is, shows the last two years' history. And the two events that we did last year. There was a third event that the board did, but it was a celebration of the launching of the new website. So that was not specifically tied to a proclamation.
In veterans. We missed veterans. We did veterans in twenty-three.
In twenty-three?
Yep. We did a veterans event.
I did see an event that happened in
You weren't with me yet.
Lunchroom. Okay.
Yes.
There's so, okay. That was in twenty-three?
Mm-hmm. November twenty. Small, small, little adjustment.
Thank you for that update.
So it's open for discussion.
I've got some comments and thoughts, or I can wait my turn, whatever.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I mean, it looks like some months, we definitely have more than others. February, we've got two, which I would be okay with carrying those two forward, Black History Month and Day of Remembrance of Japanese Americans Incarcerated in World War Two. Do you guys have any thoughts on that?
Oh, are we going multi-month? Because I'm happy to do that if that's the
Sure.
Definitely think that we should keep Black History Month as a, as a high-profile one. I personally don't mind. You know, this is always touchy subjects on what we're willing to put in consent and what we're not, but I'd be willing to put the day of remembrance in consent personally, but I I'm one person, so.
And I'm trying to remember, are we trying to keep proclamations to just one meeting a month, or are we, because we could read one, the first meeting of the month and read the second one, the second meeting of the month?
Yeah, I don't think there's any firm number or, I guess my general comment was several years back, April and May, and we'd read five or six at one meeting, and it just seemed like a laundry list and kind of nobody, none of the remembrances got much attention or got spotlighted. And so it was decided to take a look and try to do a relatively small number and and it didn't have to be the same ones every year. We can do some rotation. So pretty much everybody gets their turn. I think what's happened through the years additions and no subtractions. And so the list kept kept growing, but personally, I don't see any problem with doing two in a month. It was just to try to get away from having four, five or six at one, at one meeting and it was like, that was almost like not recognizing anybody because it just got diluted. So I think the two is bad number per month to highlight. And you know, I don't think anything's written in stone, but without taking too much time this morning, maybe go through quickly and highlight personal choices and maybe one-on-one with Maura.
Sure. I think the big event is acknowledging the proclamation and then if we want to possibly host a small reception before the meeting, we've done some breakfast in the past for Commissioner Shepherd's knowledge. And I think, again, a lot of this was brought up because in twenty-three, we did a pretty robust Hispanic Heritage Month. And then, but we didn't do very much for Black History Month. So we're kind of like trying to balance. So we acknowledge many different cultures and try to maybe stand out a couple of special events during the year that we can kind of highlight and also invite people into into our world here.
So it sounds like for February, we were starting with February, right? So are we okay with doing both of those proclamations?
I'm, yeah, that's, that's fine by me. I think that makes, if we're doing a full month proclamation, it makes sense that that's on the first meeting of the month that we can do it on. And then I just looked at the date. It looks like if we do the day of remembrance on a different meeting, it works out fine. So yes.
Okay. And then March, there's only one, which is Women's History Month, which I would prefer to have on the agenda and read.
I agree. April.
It looks like we did not do the National Child Abuse one last year, but we did the year before. So I think that's one of the alternating ones, maybe. So I'd be okay doing that one. And then I'm okay skipping Library Week, but the mayor of Philomath right now, I could hear him complaining, who's also the chair of our library board.
Nancy, if I may, I think that that's one that I would like us to have in the packet at least. If, even if we don't read, I think, you know, we're partially responsible for library funding and transferring of funding in the county. So, you know, I think, I think that's a packet one. I agree that we don't have to read it, but I think it'd be good to have in there.
The Library Week in the consent calendar. Pat, did you, were you saying something?
Well, yeah, I was just gonna point out, we're not removing any of these. It's just level of recognition in the consent calendar is a good way to lightly recognize some of these so that we have the capacity to focus on a couple per month.
Public Health Week.
I'm ambivalent on that one. It seems like, does the health department usually do their own thing?
Yes, they do.
And I would also, you know, as the chair, I'm happy to go to other events and read these as well, and then just have them on the consent calendar. If, if, you know, organizations or groups would like me to come, obviously, I'm not going to force myself anywhere, but.
We can make that happen. Make a note to April.
Okay, so maybe Public Health Week on the consent counter. Yes.
Yes.
The only I can remember some because county is the public health authority. Don't we have some meeting? I can remember something at the library a few months back, and I think celebrating public health. I thought it was month, but
They have typically put, put together, like Rachel was saying, they've put together an event that you guys, I believe, have attended. April's on, so you can clarify.
Can you help us out, April?
Sure, I can do my best. So since I've been here in twenty twenty for COVID reasons, we haven't had this event, but in years past, and Public Health is eager to, to have this come back. There's been a, in the past, it was an evening event. That was a community event. Health helped, health funded it, but it was sort of appetizers and sort of social hour as well as some public health awards to community, as well as an internal public health award. A topic of, of interest for the year, usually aligning with the theme of Public Health Week. I, I believe that, you know, planning is probably already underway for the, the hopes of this. And I know last year it kind of fizzled out when, when it didn't, it didn't work out for your calendars. And we may have missed the boat this year and may have to adjust, and we can absolutely do that if that's what the board desires, but it is our, in public health, the, the chance to, to really emphasize the, the upstream and downstream impacts that public health has.
Well, April, I don't think we missed anything. I don't think it's too late. Do you feel like our, you know, employees and partners would be excited if we were to, you know, read this proclamation and have an event? I mean, would that contribute to, you know, good good feelings and good work environment and all that?
I certainly, I certainly feel that it, that it would. I don't know if it's during a, a morning board meeting, if it would have the same impact as, as if we were able to convene the Board of Health. In the past, I believe, and I could be wrong, I believe that the that the, one of the meetings was sort of repurposed to an evening Board of Health meeting. And maybe that's one of our quarterly meetings, or I'm not sure how it, how it worked out. But it was a, it was a special set aside event. But yes, I think people would be very excited. The community awards are, have, have historically been a, a big deal. It's been well-attended and, and appreciated by, by folks within and outside of the organization.
When you, April, when you mentioned Board of Health, that's the meeting I'm at the library that I think I'm remembering, and it was well-attended. So perhaps the this board's role would be to acknowledge that that's April twenty-first or whatever it is, at the library, there is a community-wide event that we can encourage all of our community to attend.
Wonderful. Thank you. I can, I can share all of this with Sarah and team. I like the idea of an off-site event and, and the, the board is, and county leadership is such a key piece to, to bring this together. So I don't know if, you know, the Public Health Week is the first week of April every year, and I know everyone's schedules are, are busy. So I'm not sure if an additional event on your calendars, this is something that will work for you, but it would be much appreciated.
So what I would support is Commissioner Wise, is having this in our consent agenda and Commissioner Wise reading it at, at the event that you are putting together. If, if, if there's a slot for that, I think that's the place to read it, is to have the chair read it at an already planned public health event rather than create our own thing. So that's, that's my thought on it.
I just have one extra comment. Hopefully, our crisis center will open in April. So if there's also a way to wrap around public health and the work that we're doing, as well as some of the the new offerings the county's going to offer. So April could be, April and early May should be a great month for our health department. Really, really busy time of year, so. So we'll do an event around that as well, so.
Absolutely. You can put like, play in front of it, TBD.
Okay, moving right along, proclaiming April fourteenth to twentieth is Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
I would prefer to do that one, to have that, to read that or have it read at a meeting.
I have no strong feelings about this, so yeah, sure.
That makes two so far. And then Crime Victims Rights Week.
I think, doesn't the DA do a event?
We do. And historically, I think that you all made a proclamation of this, read that, had that, one of the Commissioners has attended at least in the last few years. So we have a crime victims rights week and we probably call it courthouse lawn, all the flags set up to represent the victims of crimes, different categories. And then we have a special event ceremony where I and some folks speak briefly at this. That has been appreciated in the past.
So I see that as the same thing as the public health, where we have it in the consent agenda here and somebody reads it at the event.
That sounds good.
April thirtieth is National Therapy Animal Day.
Jump in on this one, just to give you a little bit of background. This was, it was first read in twenty twenty-three, and it came at a specific request from an organization that's part of the therapy animal program. So twenty twenty-three is the first time that's appeared on, on a board calendar, and it was a specific request at that time from an outside agency.
A local outside agency or?
Yes.
Okay. In, in that case, I'm personally fine leaving it off. Um, in, in that case, I'm personally fine leaving it off. Period unless they want, unless they contact us and say they want it again. Um, because I, I don't want this to keep growing because people ask us things and then we assume to do it the next year, so.
Dave, I agree with that.
I, I was thinking this was for Geiger, but.
I, I know, but I will, I'll break the news to him.
Best boy proclamation.
And he can't read.
So, uh, uh, unless we're contacted again, we're dropping this. May wildfire awareness month.
Like, that one's pretty important right now, um. And I think that that one not only should be read here, but we've got a lot of rural fire protection districts that might like to hear. That might like to come to an event. So I think that that one's a good, uh, an event type, type thing, so, um.
And I, I think ODFs usually involve, or may show up in person.
Okay.
And I also, uh, just want to flag, will we be presenting the budget more in May or June? May, so it'll be a, a busy month for the BOC.
May always is.
Well, so those, uh. Three hyper close days that we have, um, scheduled right now, we want to keep in mind.
Well, uh, I can see this is the first time through, we get a revised list and, and then see, oh, that's too many in that month.
May's the month, so.
Yeah.
Okay, Historic Preservation Month.
Typically, that's pretty big for our community. There's lots of, um, historic preservation advocates out there. And I know our, we have the Historic Resources Commission, they plan, um, events. So I'm not sure, this could be one that we put on the consent calendar and then is read at an event that they hold potentially.
I agree, I, I think, especially if we're trying to do one a meeting, this, there are going to be historic preservation events, so. Having one of us read it there would be probably the best.
Last year, there was a calendar with, I think, almost one event a day in May.
Yep. It's very overwhelming.
There, uh, at least last several years, been very active, okay? Asian, uh, Pacific Islanders.
So I think we, we jumped over community.
Oh, I'm sorry, Community Action Month.
What is Community Action Month?
That's what I was just gonna ask.
Cool.
I don't have to pull it up and actually look at it. It was, it was not on the board's agenda for twenty twenty-four.
I mean, we have community action agencies, but, um.
That was my thought. I thought, uh, there was maybe a celebration month in terms of community action agency work. That happens around like state, not positive.
Okay.
I, I'm not remembering. Uh, anything that goes with this, so, uh, question mark by that one.
Yeah, I'm not feeling an overwhelming sense of pride for Community Action Month. I don't, I don't know. I'm happy to, i- i- if it's, if it turns out it was another request or something like that, it's one that I'm not. Upset about striking completely, but if it, if it is honoring people who do work here and they like to be honor them, then, um, oh. Okay. Oh, there's a, there's a whole website.
I was just gonna say, yep, it celebrates the impact of community action agencies across the county and assisting low income families. Helping them achieve economic stability. So I would agree and say that if, unless, you know, CSC asks us to read this, then. We don't need to include it.
Hey. Uh, Asian Pacific Islanders. I, I think we have had, it seemed like in the past, uh, someone from that community. Read the proclamation, uh, you want to put that one on? A- a- as needed, or, uh, if, if there's, uh, a request from the community. Or, or else have it on the consent calendar.
I, oh, go ahead, Nancy, sorry.
No, you go. Well, I was just gonna say, I'm not sure, you know, it's always, again, feels like a slippery slope because we're choosing some and not others. And of course, I don't mean to be, you know, favoring any group or another, um. So I'm, I, I could go either way. If we were to read it, I would want, you know, someone who's actually Asian Pacific Islander to, to be able to read it. And I'm not sure if we, um, you know, have any volunteers that would be willing to do that.
Well, this is kind of where I go to the commissioners who are involved in the community. Do you, uh, can you identify someone?
Well, I'm not gonna start listing people's names off in the public meeting, but we have four months to figure that out. Uh, so I, I think that having this one read, uh, aloud is probably a better. I, I think that it would be a good use of reading it aloud. So whether it's one of us or we find somebody who is of the community to read it out. I think that that, that would be. A good one.
Okay, I can agree with that.
And, and I will just jump in as, as part of the purpose of this exercise. I know it's, it, it can be a little tedious, but it does give us. As staff also an opportunity to work with you and help identify those folks, get them on the schedule. Um, and do that advanced planning so that, you know, we, we have meaningful. We have, we have readers that, you know, uh, are, are vested in the proclamation.
Well, that should be the, the general guideline for, for any of these. Older Americans Month.
I didn't find it on a consent calendar, sorry.
Say it. I wasn't gonna say it, but you said it, Rachel.
I nodded.
I thought every month was older Americans Month. Maybe that's just me.
Older than what?
Well, it doesn't say.
You can't say Old Americans Month, because then it's a, a whole nother thing to say older and then it's relative, so, I don't know. Sorry.
But we digress. I don't know. We did something in twenty-three. Um.
Do we remember who requested older Americans Month more way back in twenty twenty-three? To be read? Was it like AARP or, uh, or local organization? Or advocacy, senior services, something along those lines that.
It, it wasn't AARP, but, uh, I'm not sure. Who it might have been.
I think if their request comes up, we can. Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to striking it unless there's a, a request.
TBA, okay. Mental health awareness month.
Pretty important.
Yes, yeah, I, I don't know, you know, we've. More or less agreed to read two of them. It's important to have somewhere. Is there some sort of event that's going to be happening? I mean, May's packed, but is there going to be some sort of event that's happening? About this that typically happens, or?
It could be the Crisis Center if we don't get it open in April.
It could be an event at the Crisis Center to like, because there's the difference between a grand opening and, you know, just showing it off to everybody. You're not muted, but we can't hear you.
Oh, strange, okay, that's, you can't, okay, thanks, it might have just been a delay. Um, I just stepped out of the room for a moment for a quick conversation, so I might have missed some of this. I just want to share that with the Crisis Center, we will be providing an update next week at the BOC, CHC. Uh, Health Department, uh, Joint Meeting, um. The, the keys will be in hand, like on April twenty eighth, and that is just the very first step. So I would, I would ask the board to consider, um, looking through May into June. For any kind of, um, celebratory events, gonna take time to get things set up, to get people moved over. To get hires in and trained, um, so I, I'd encourage, uh, summertime for. Um, those, those big ribbon cutting kind of events.
April, I think there was a question to just mental health awareness month in general, uh, I think, uh, Commissioner Shepherd was asking. Is, is there some kind of specific event that has typically been held related to mental health awareness?
Well, I know that there have been various, um, we've done a lot of social campaigns and there's been, it's tied in to other. Um, health department wide, uh, community initiatives, um. I don't have that, uh, i- i- in, in my pocket. In, in the last, you know. A couple of years when I've been more in, in the overall space, I haven't seen a, a, a board event. But there are certainly ways to tie in to, um, to crisis and, and other events.
All right.
Okay, so to me, this sounds like something that can go on the consent agenda, and then whenever we have an opening for the, um. The, the Crisis Center, we can, we can read it. Even if it's in early June, you don't have to fudge the date, you can just say, hey, May was. The Mental Health Awareness Month, and we had worked on this, and because we were working so hard on mental health, we couldn't have this event until now. So there you go. But, um, I think that that's a consent agenda and read it at a ribbon cutting ceremony kind of thing.
Uh, just FYI, April, um. Uh, because of the, our many partners who help, uh. Uh, fund and support the, um, Mental Health Crisis Center, I, I, I can envision more than one. Ribbon cutting, uh, depending on, um, schedules of the, the DC group or. I actually talked to the governor yesterday about coming down and, and, uh, helping this, uh. Celebrate this, uh, facility, so, uh. Uh, those kind of folks, uh, or local electeds, uh. Uh, we, I, I can envision more than one, uh. Ribbon cutting, uh, to accommodate, uh, elected's, um, schedules.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we've got a lot of, a lot to celebrate and, and show off and, and, uh. Help folks be aware of what, of the great things that are gonna be happening here.
You know, uh, i- if we have more than one, uh, slightly different theme or, uh, but, uh, I think. Uh, this is, uh, quite a u- unique facility and, uh. We should do our best to, uh, showcase it and, and, uh, let, let the community know what. Uh, how hard we're, uh, working on this. Okay, or, anything else? Okay, um, May nineteen to twenty-five, Public Works Week.
So I think this is one that we should read and one that we should have a, um, an event for.
I was thinking like. I don't know, a lunch at Public Works or something at Public Works for the employees out there that we can attend and. Be, be with them.
They. Maybe more towards summer, but they do, uh, lunch barbecue annual.
Beginning of the summer, yeah.
Uh, so that may be, uh, June, but, uh, it, it's close to this. And so, and, uh, I, I think that's, uh, annual, uh, event.
Once again, we can hit the checkpoint that it is an event and help contribute towards the barbecue and also read, read it again.
Make sure we have, uh, commissioners and staff in, in attendance to, uh, support those folks.
Um, I would just ask Rachel and or Rick, could you reach out to Gary or Public Works? And maybe ask what they would prefer, like how they would prefer to be celebrated?
Yes.
That's fair.
Maybe kind of like the older Americans Month, it should be more, more than just a week of recognition. All right, June, uh, June nineteenth. Uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, Juneteenth, which is now, uh. Uh, state and county, uh, holiday.
I would, I would want to read both of these. They work well together because. One, we could do a couple of days before Juneteenth, and one we could do at the beginning of the month. So I just wanted to bring both of them up, um. I don't want to impose our proclamation on the Juneteenth celebrations, but if they want. Um, uh, you know, NAACP puts on something every, every year, and if they want us there, I'm happy, I'd be happy for one of us to go, but. And, and to read it, but I'm, I'm planning on attending anyways, but you know, I, I think I've seen Commissioner Wise there before, so like, this is. Well, that's a weird sound, uh, but, yeah, I, I, I think that we should read both of these at different meetings.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I think for, um. June as two SLGBTQI plus Pride Month, I think we should have another celebration or event.
All right.
So I have another thought too. So we are getting that flagpole finally, sometimes. Um, and June, Flag Day is in June. Not that we necessarily want to add too much, but it might be nice to celebrate sort of like a dual. I don't know, we have this flagpole. I would also like us to, during June, to add a pride flag up there, so that could be. You know, we could have like a dual celebration, like, yeah, we have a flagpole, we've got the American flag, and for at least this month, we're getting the, the pride flag up there too.
State flag, don't forget, state flag.
Yes, I, I, I support having, I support having the pride flag up there. I, I do want to note. That if we do a proclamation for Flag Day, I do not want it to become a recurring thing. Uh, I just. To celebrate a flagpole sounds like a good use of it, but I, that's not one that I feel like needs to become an annual, uh, proclamation.
No, I could, I completely agree with that, and maybe we don't need a Flag Day proclamation, but maybe just, just some acknowledgement of the, the new flagpole.
Yeah.
It's been ordered.
Great.
We just need to let the cement, yeah. Lay the cement right now.
All right, uh, July, uh, twenty-six, twenty twenty, um. As Americans with Disabilities Act, the Awareness Day.
Yeah.
Yep. It's the only one for July, and that's an important one, so I think we should read it.
Okay.
August, Health Center Week, between August four and August ten.
And I can't remember if that's one. I know, I think they like to do their own, their own event or celebration. So is that one that we could TBD and ask them if they want us to read it at a meeting, or if we can just put it on the consent calendar?
Sounds good. I like asking people things, that's good.
Okay. Uh, September, uh, Suicide Prevention Month.
I would, um. Like us to do this, as I and my family have been impacted by suicide in twenty twenty-four. It would mean a lot to me to read this in the, or have it read in the meeting.
Um, seems like in the past, the DA has, um, been involved.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Yeah, you can let me know how.
Thank you. Might be reading the proclamation.
What, what, what date do we have a date for that, yeah?
Uh, it might be the first meeting in September, um, I don't have my calendar in front of me, but.
Yes.
Hey, National Preparedness Month. Seems a little vague, do it.
Oh, yeah, thematically, it kind of goes along with your fire.
Yeah.
A month, but at the same time, it's also. Not, not a bad time to kind of brush off on our preparedness acknowledgement, since.
I. I'm looking at National Preparedness Month, and I'm looking at Great Shakeout Month. Um, I'm assuming Great Shakeout Month is, uh, like, prepare for Cascadia type, type stuff, yes. Um, I'm not sure that we need both of those, uh, I think. Especially if we do them one after another, it's. Potentially oversaturating people with being prepared for Cascadia then. But I think national preparedness is more broad than, than Great Shakeout. So that's, that would be my preference between the two of them, but, um, then I, I'm. I know I'm skipping the other two of them, but I'm just trying to compare, compare those two there, um.
Well, I can agree with that, um, and I think, you know, the county and Brian Lee, I think they usually. Do some other event where, like, at ten, twelve, jump under your desk and do a drill. And so I think that would be a good one to put on the consent calendar and then have a, you know, a separate thing that's organized.
While we're supposed to be under our desk, read a proclamation is, uh.
Just shout it really loud.
Uh, I, I can see alternating, in alternating years, uh, doing the broad one. Uh, National Preparedness Month and then the following year do the, uh, Great Shakeout, um, but, uh, maybe again, you know, talk to Brian Lee and his crew and, and see, uh, uh, see what they would like us to highlight. Okay, Constitution Day, uh, September fifth this, this year, twenty twenty.
I don't feel strongly about this one.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I might feel more strongly about this in a few months, but I, right now I don't have strong opinions about Constitution Day. I, I think it would be good to put a pin in it and just like, let's see, uh, if we want to, we might want to bring it up in, in a few months, we might want to talk about it and broadcast it, but I, I don't feel a need to even have it in there. That's one of the like old America holidays like Flag Day and Constitution Day and stuff like that, that don't really get celebrated that much anymore.
Which is a good reason to celebrate them.
For some, that's, that's an argument.
And you know, I have nothing against the constitution. I've got a copyright back there in my purse even, but yeah, it just seems kind of unnecessary. But yeah, we can talk about it when we get closer and just see if, uh, the mood or the feeling has changed.
Well, and there may be something, uh, by way that, um, where we do want to highlight that.
I, I just want to, uh, acknowledge September is also, we'll have Labor Day, which also that's a day that we also honor our unions as well. And so there may be something along those lines that we may want to, uh, look at in September. Even though Labor Days are the first Monday of September, you may want to find a way to.
I mean, we could also do that in August, like the last meeting in August to, to remind everybody that Labor Day is coming up.
Last year, the last couple of weeks, we canceled the last week in August as a board meeting for general, just because so many people are off and they're getting their. So, um, it's, it's totally entirely up to you as well though, so.
I, I think that's a goo- good, uh, potential addition.
I, I would be supportive of adding the Labor Day thing.
And then it's a question of the mechanics of, um, how best to do that if we already have uh, Suicide Prevention Month on the first, uh, board meeting in September, um.
I would also like to recommend to you as well as possibly doing a reception in that September, bringing folks come back to work, especially the folks who work here who are represented. This would be a nice way to, um, break bread together and, and work together, so.
And Rachel, could you repeat when you, with your, the timing for that, that you were thinking?
September, yeah.
Like, real, I'm just thinking that, you know, for parents of kids in school, the first like week or two of September is really busy and overwhelming.
Yeah, true. Um, but Labor Day is the first Monday in September. So it's just a question of, is it the first Monday in September or not? But just, we should, I would recommend that we acknowledge, uh, labor in the month of September. I, I think, I'm not, uh, married to before, after. It just, I, I think thematically it would be something that, uh, I think is going to be important as a goal, as being a workforce choice and, and, you know, moving, moving our together.
Oh, I definitely, I think that's a really good idea as long as we are, um, we get in a way that doesn't burden our labors. You know what I mean? Like, don't make them come to work early or stay late or something or miss their lunch, you know?
Absolutely. And, and we also are going to try to, uh, uh, bring back the fall barbecue that, uh, we've discussed as well for employees. So it, it, we can also read it, read a proclamation at that event as well, so.
That's the one where Vance barbecues for all of us?
That's correct, yes.
Is, is that a motion? Okay, uh, that, that, um, makes sense and try to figure out the logistics of how best. But I mean, the other thing about Labor Day is there, there are lots of other, uh, outside events that are, that are going on. So, uh, just how to, how best to highlight that and, and not, uh, Commissioner Wise says, be a burden or get lost in six other local, uh, uh, local events. So, a- and especially that this is a, uh, new idea for us, just how to, uh, just fit it in the schedule. Yeah. Sounds like we're agreed that it's a good, good idea. October, Hispanic Heritage Month.
I say we read that one. Um, and I, I believe my understanding is that we supported during the National Preparedness Month this, this year and not the Great Shakeout Month. So that was, that would be my recommendation for October.
Okay, but we have an earthquake, it's on you.
Yeah, if, if we have a Cascadia event, it's because we didn't read a proclamation about it, yes.
Just putting it out.
And, and if the Cascadia event, uh, occurs before, uh, the date to read, we'll, we'll go ahead and read it.
Yeah.
We can always add back through requests. Uh, just want to be cognizant of time, Chair. It's going to be up to an hour and we're on item uh, four point two. So, uh, not to, to rush you along.
Well, we only have one month left.
We have one month left, so.
Uh, Veterans Day.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think we did a celebration last time and had like the color garden stuff. Is that correct? I would like to do that again if we can.
I, I think that's correct.
Correct.
Uh, and make it at least a small event on the, on our, uh, board meeting day.
Yeah.
Okay, Native American Heritage Month.
Yes.
Yes.
National Rural Health Day slice month.
Day month. I feel like that's another one where health might have an event that we could read something at.
A consent calendar.
Yeah.
All right. Well, now, um, unless there's anything else on that, we will.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we just really quickly go over which ones we said we were going to have an event for? That the, cause the question is, some of these the board is going to sponsor, so it's going to come out of our budget, if I'm understanding correctly. So which ones did we say that we were willing to sponsor and pay for?
My notes indicate, um, Pride Month in June for a board event. Um, a September, uh, Labor Day proclamation and events, the structure of which will be determined. And, um, uh, an event for, uh, for Veterans Day.
Okay, and then.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
Oh, sorry. Um, and then veteran, or excuse me, Public Works, correct? Or are we, or are we waiting to hear back from them?
Public Works was, the conversation was going to be to check with them to see if they wanted to incorporate, um, board recognition perhaps into their annual barbecue. And if not, then look at it again to maybe do something else.
I would be happy to have them come to our board meeting as well.
Yeah, I, I think, I think Commissioner Wise, you suggested that we just ask them how they want to be notified. And I think note, or, yeah, I, I would also like to add wildfire awareness month event with, so for our rural fire, fire protection districts. I know it's in May and that's a crazy month, but I think that they, sometimes they feel left out, uh, and they would, I think they'd like to, the, the boards at least, if not the staff out there too, would like to have some sort of recognition.
Okay, uh, I, I think the idea is to revise the list and you get it out to us and then you can see what how wise we were, uh, this morning, this, uh, deciding which events get spotlighted and which are on the consent calendar and, uh, how many uh, events to go along with, um, uh, recognition that we're doing.
Thank you.
So would you like this brought back at another time, just for?
Formal approval.
Final formal approval, but, okay, all right. Thank you, Commissioners.
And, and, uh, I can see some of them, uh, the particular department may not know exactly what, uh, what they're planning this year, because it's six months from now or, but a- at least get as many things pinned down as you can.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
Moving right along, I, I, that was a long ten minutes, uh, next up, twenty forty initiative and twenty twenty-five, twenty-seven budget, uh, by any budget priorities.
Chair, would you mind taking a five minute break first?
Uh, certainly. And let's try to keep it to five minutes. Uh, next up, you, you're next up, Greg.
Got it, thank you. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. We will resume our goal setting meeting with five point one, twenty 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 forty initiatives and the twenty five, twenty seven budget priorities. Greg Munn.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Greg Munn. I'm the county CFO. I'm joined today by Sean McGuire, who is the county sustainability coordinator. And the purpose of today's discussion is to review and confirm your priorities for the twenty five, twenty seven biennium and the twenty forty initiative. The provided priorities are on page twenty two of the packet and are the same as what was approved for the twenty three, twenty five budget and are the basis for developing our current department goals for the upcoming proposed budget. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McGuire here, and he'll give you some super interesting background that you may or may not remember. It was very useful for me being new here. I would say that my experience with other counties, that the position that Benton County is in with these values that were determined a few years ago and being able to use those rolling forward into developing resource allocation for the budget has been very useful. It's very valuable and is really a stepping stone, in my opinion, for moving towards a full strategic plan for the or planning process for the county. So very encouraging for me, and it's a great foundation to start from. So I'll turn it over to Sean.
Thank you, Greg. It's really been refreshing to be talking with Rick and Greg on this. Still kind of reacting to Mr. McGuire, I don't know.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did want to, many of you already know, but and we're going to be briefing you more specifically, but wanted to kind of give a broad background on the twenty forty initiative and then kind of give us where we are today and where we're going to be going next. So back in twenty sixteen, the county embarked on a two-year, two-phase public engagement process. We reached about forty four hundred individuals, ten thousand comments. This was led by twenty community leaders. So we're no elected part of that process. So it was really great to have there. So that process created or identified our community's five core values predicated on health and equity. We then took another year to, and Joe Kirby, the previous administrator, called it operationalizing these. These are very highfalutin. I mean, they're thirty thousand feet, and it's not always easy to get into a bureaucracy where how does public works fit in? How does records and elections fit in? And so we operationalize those. This is all in twenty nineteen. We were gearing up for the nineteen twenty one and this little tiny thing called, you know, COVID hit. So in the summer of twenty twenty two, two Commissioner Weiss and Commissioner Malone, as well as Commissioner Ogierro, identified these five priorities. These are kind of here are focus areas here, the core values, but when you kind of boil it down, what are your priorities as elected leaders? And so those are the ones you have on on page twenty two, twenty three. From there, I wanted to share, and I know County Administrator Rachel has, you know, we're trying to do data and sorry, well, formal. We're really trying to get the dashboards and the data. And one of the great things was Rick and I working with is if these are your priorities, then the budget request should be in alignment with those and working with finance and Jan Ambul specifically. And Rick, we have those numbers. And so you, as the three electeds, can say, hey, here are our priorities and here are our budget requests and those that were funded and where are we? In parallel, each each department director identified three to five goals also of those priorities. And so now we're starting to identify, okay, these are your priorities. Current service levels may fund them, but, you know, we need to upgrade. And so that would be the budget request. Now, we kind of we kind of came across a little bit of a hiccup in the last one. We kind of did it. It's somewhat parallel, but not perfectly in alignment. We're trying to fix that this year so that at the exact same time, the directors identify their department goals in alignment with your priorities. They're also asking for their POPs or their budget requests. So that's much tighter. All the directors know what's going on. I can track it. Side note, again, we're just evolving so well. Civic Plus, we can identify your community. When you fill out a checklist, you have core values and the focus areas. We want to put the your priorities on there so the directors and this and the public know exactly this is what you are. Currently, it's a PDF and I can't track that. I mean, it'd just be take forever to do that. We can search that now. So I can go before you all in six months and say, here are your budget requests. Here are your department goals. Here's what you're listening to, all in alignment with your priorities. So you can share that with your constituents. So that's how we're kind of go moving forward. Before we get to the next budget, another thing that just came up, it was really interesting for me to sit here and listen to your proclamations. We've been talking about having your either goal setting or something each month to identify one of your priorities. And just listening, you've already hit all of them. Health, equity, public safety, housing with the Dare Village, resiliency with the fire. You're doing these things. I think it's a lot of messaging as well. So we're kind of at that precipice. We have the data, we have the budget, we have the messaging. Speak with Ann, get success stories going in some ways. So that's where we are right now, gearing up for the budget. What we're here to do is exactly as Greg said, to confirm that these are your priorities for the next budget moving forward. And speaking, we brief Commissioner. If I keep going, Administrator Rachel and Commissioner Gabe, sorry, first name base, the whole Mr. McGuire thing chewed me up. But to have, I'm not hearing any deviation from the prayers themselves. Obviously, the three of you have specific topics or projects, or I'm hoping I'm using the right nouns, but they all fit within those five categories. And again, Commissioner Weiss, you you were a champion for the internal, the responsible governance and some of those that are still there. I heard transparency from you as well. Just kind of moving on. So if we can get those, these five confirmed, all the pieces fall in. And this is what Greg was alluding to. We have the pieces to do some sort of a strategic plan or it's just once this hits, put your trade tables in there by position because we're off. So that's the background. Didn't know if you had questions or Greg, if you wanted.
Yeah. May I just add kind of the next chapter of of this story is again, this is getting us, as Sean alluded to, a little bit more closer connected into our process than we were two years ago. I think we made steps. This is the next step. The step after that, and Greg has alluded to it, is that this is really a good framework already. But how do we really get it nice and crisp in terms of strategic thinking and planning and adopting? So that we're not always having these conversations, right, that we we actually have that and we can look at it and we can update it. And more importantly, we can measure it and be able to report back. That's really where we want to go with the formation of, as I know Rachel's been talking to you all a lot about this, but within we often call it kind of our organizational change area, but that that is really sort of the centerpiece of a a team and a group that will help us go to that next level. So I'm just, I'm excited about this because it's somewhere we wanted to get to, and it feels like it's it's there. It's it's there with all three of you now in in place and you get a new board and it's exciting. And anyway, I just wanted to give you a glimpse of that, and Rachel and I will be talking to you more about that sort of construction as it comes together and how we'll support your efforts.
So it said you didn't want a motion, but my guess is you still want to know that we're supportive of it. I appreciate the time that you guys took to keep bring me up to speed on on the priorities and all those things. And as I said in that meeting, these this is what I would have chosen if I were given a blank slate. So I'm very supportive of the five, five topics. And I talked about, yes, the specifics, like the projects, action items, those things, but this is the broader higher level view. I'm supportive of this. So thank you.
Can I just real quickly address, that was the word we were using. We don't want to lock you in with emotion that these are the only words. We can tweak. If something happens, we can kind of go down a road that you three, that's why. We just didn't want to lock you in. Oh, it has to be these words or these things. It's if this is what you confirm, this we're going after and we can tweak it as we go through either the next biennium and beyond.
I think I would like to add a bullet right at first under climate crisis and we support alternative forms of transportation. And if you want specifics, multi-use paths and transit.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you, Commissioner.
And.
Does anybody else agree with that?
I I'd support that. I'd, yeah.
Yeah, I support that.
Okay, the the other comment, I've I'm starting my seventh year and early on. So I started in twenty nineteen, which is a budget year and had the twenty forty goals and then had the budget and they weren't really talking to each other very well. And so I think we've made a good progress in coordinating our lofty vision with our day to day where we spend our money. And so I think we made good progress and I assume we will keep making progress. But seven years ago, they were pretty separate and just gradually, you know, getting closer to aligning our goals with where we spend our money. And that, well, it's obviously a work in progress, but I'm I'm pleased with how far we've gotten.
Thank you.
I will just chime in that I support everything that is here. Thank you for bringing this back to us and highlighting it. As Sean mentioned, I am always a fan of good governance or responsible governance, as we're calling it, and I'll just put a plug in. Once again, I mean, we always have room for improvement. If we don't have a solid foundation or if we're not doing a great job with our basics, then we're not going to be successful with the bigger projects and initiatives that we're trying to get. So.
Agreed.
So I thought I would just give you a couple more pieces of information to help fully paint this picture. So the value statements here that we've been talking about end up getting communicated to departments and and they use those value statements to build a requested budget that comes through the budget process. And it actually looks like this. So they send out, we sound out, Sean collects information. All of the information's being proposed by the department is connected back to those those value statements. But there's a very one-to-one relationship there. And then, when you see it in your actual adopted budget, for example, for the Board of Commissioners on page fifty five, the budget document, it looks like this. So what we're doing here is, as you know, is connecting the dots from values all the way eventually to outcomes. And that's part of an overall strategic planning process. The piece we're missing here is we have a values base or a values foundation. On top of that, there's local things, factors that are out of our control. I mean, think about the wildfires, things like that that will affect in addition to the values that will feed into this strategic planning process for the board to consider how to allocate those resources in the future. So we've got the pieces there together and we're kind of combining them. We've got some more work to do, but it's a good place to start.
Well, I appreciate the the common thread of work in progress and that this is, this is a living document and I'm all in favor of that.
Thank you, Commissioners. Really appreciate that. And to echo Rick, this is really exciting.
And the work that's been done already has been has been fabulous. And it was great for me to walk in and see this and it makes it makes it easier just to continue to take the next steps. So.
I just chime in one more time and say, thank you. Thank you, Sean, for working on all this. And Greg, I loved what she said about connecting values to outcomes. You know, what's the point of having values if we're not seeing the outcome? So I love that. And then, since we're talking about being strategic and planning and all that, I won't miss the opportunity to say that I am in favor of some sort of strategic plan or strategic operating plan for the county sometime in the not-too-distant future.
We can do that.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thanks.
I guess a quick question for Sean Lee, since there was sort of a little bit of an addition to it, do we just want to formalize it by saying that you guys are all in favor of I I know that when this was originally adopted, you voted on it. And since you're going to make a modification, yeah, I know it's just small, but at least we have it for the record.
Are you are you asking for a motion for the modification?
Yes.
Modification to. Who's your favorite?
I would move to add a bullet point under I moved on of community resiliency and climate crisis to add that we support alternative forms of transportation, including multi-use paths and transit.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And thank you, Commissioner Malone, for always being an advocate for alternate transportation. You're very good at that.
All right, thank you. All right. Five point two, leadership policies and practices, updates and review. County Administrator Rachel McEnany.
Thank you. In your packet, you have a redline version of the leadership policies and practices and the agreements between the Board of Commissioners, the County Administrator and County Council. Some of the language is just updating some language that that fits with it, as well as it does acknowledge that we now have an assistant county administrator. If and when I become incapacitated or working out of state or at a conference, Rick would step in for in that role. In the past, it was a director would be appointed as acting county administrator and for efficiency. And in the last biennial budget, you had the knowledge, you had felt that the county administrator needed a assistant county administrator, and thankfully, we were able to bring Rick Crager out, who was our former chief financial officer, to join the leadership in the VOC team.
So after a failed recruitment.
Yes, after a failed recruitment. That doesn't make it sound like Rick. It wasn't my number one choice as well. So.
Sometimes we luck out.
So, you know, the county administrator's organizational management involves a lot of planning, coordinating, and overseeing many resources, you know, processes and people within the organization to achieve our specific objectives. Many of what we just discussed with with our twenty forty goals. And to, you know, really have efficient operation for our optimal performance as Chair Weiss duly articulated before, if we can't do the basics well, all of our projects and our aspirational goals don't, doesn't matter. We have statutory obligations to deliver services to the people in Benton County, and I think we're all committed around this. That being said, sometimes things get kind of squishy when I believe that all our commissioners should have a really robust relationship with all of our directors. They should be able to have those conversations. However, I we can't have commissioners give a certain amount of hours of work, whether it's a question on public policy that requires a lot of research because we are also asking our directors to not only be advising us on policy, but also they have to run the daily operations and manage lots of people underneath them and follow the rules. And so I'm trying to balance their work schedule and expectations. So therefore, a lot of it is funneled through the county administrator. As you know, I think I had twenty three direct reports when I first got here, anything from being the health director to well, like part-time sustainability coordinators and part-time receptionists were all directly reporting to me, which also required giving them exactly some of the same attention and work that needed. And I I was heavily underwater, I would say, in the first month because that not only are you trying to manage operation, but build a relationship, set policy and work towards it. So this kind of expands this. This was originally built by Joe Kirby, my predecessor. Because, you know, a lot of folks didn't understand the amount of hours that a county administrator is expected to do and all the different work. And I think it gives, you know, kind of the guardrails of how we move forward. And if we do have to, you know, if we go too far, we'll have conversations. I don't think it'll be a really big deal, but I think Commissioner Shepherd has had recent experience in the city council where where the lives might be blurred when it comes to hiring and firing and leadership. I really like when you weigh in on my on our leadership team. It really helps and frames me and sees things that sometimes maybe I'm not aware of. So I want to continue that conversation and have that open door with all my commissioners. So we kind of have an understanding and manage manage expectations, I like to use. So with that, I open it up for a conversation on the policy document, and I'd love your feedback.
That's good.
Well, Nancy.
Okay, I have one question so far about it's, let's see. On it's page thirty four and eighty eight of the packet and it's so governing statement, and it talks about the these are included but not limited to, and then several items. And one of them is maintaining and operating a county jail, which I thought was actually the sheriff's responsibility by ORS. I see Vance is online. If he's there, maybe he could weigh in on this.
I love running a jail. I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, I don't want to make it seem like we are trying, you know, that we are usurping any of the sheriff's roles or responsibilities.
I mean, I mean, in consultation with the sheriff, there will always be facility upgrades. Anytime, as you know, our dilapidated jail has really expensive repairs needed many times on an emergency basis. So that would be a coordination of managing a county facility as well as in collaboration with the sheriff. Where those funds are allocated from, we're more likely would be in facilities. So perhaps that's some of the my understanding of it.
Sure. Maybe maybe the distinction has to do with the sheriff, you know, provides or is responsible for, and then we maintain and operate as in the financial piece. I don't see Vance clicking on, so he maybe stepped away from his computer.
No, how I interpreted that is just the budget aspects and it comes, dollars come in through the through the county and then are distributed. So we are definitely involved.
Yeah, I have to sign off on any type of emergency, you know, outside financial decisions and things like that that involve, you know.
So is that okay as stated?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Anything else?
You guys go ahead.
Okay, walk into the room.
Oh, special guest, Vance Grob.
I was trying to talk. My microphone was not working. So. So yes, statutorily, it is the sheerest responsibility to provide a jail. And I remember having this brief conversation. And I remember having this brief conversation with Joe Kirby and his intent, his. His expression to me was, this is more about funding and staffing. But the actual statutory. Obligation lies with the sheriff unless the DA wants to take it.
I have no, nothing striking that from the policy, if that's what it is, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's accurate and we don't need a paragraph to explaining who does what. The county is definitely involved financially and staffing. So. I, I think it's, it's accurate. It's short, but accurate. But thank you for clarifying.
Now I'll go back and talk to IT about my microphone.
To what Nancy or Commissioner Wise was saying, I think that. There's a difference between the word providing, which is in the previous bullets and maintaining and operating, which is what. It sounds like what we, we do. So I, I think it fits.
Any other. Comments on the. Given it to before us.
I want to say, looks good. I did have a question about five point one point three, which is on page fifty-two, external communication protocols. I. I want to be clear about this. So it talks about county electeds talk to other electeds. Administrator talk to other appointed staff to staff, council to council, right? I, I think that, in my view, it is important to maintain that. I don't think it should be interpreted as entirely restrictive of don't talk to the city manager of Corvallis. Because, because what, you know, because what it reads here is that the people, the proper. It says the appropriate communication protocol for engaging another local government. And I don't plan on emailing city, city managers without CCing the, the county administrator and probably talking to you. Ahead of time that I'm doing it. But I, I just want to be clear that it, it reads very restrictive as appropriate. So I, I want to. Just talk about that for just a moment, that there are appropriate ways to have communications across that spectrum. As long as you're very cognizant of informing the correct people about it. Is that?
I think that's fair. I mean, for those who are viewing us, most of you. We have a pretty robust one-on-one that we need and an open door policy with the commissioners and the county administrator. We speak all the time, even weekends or grabbing on the cell phone to, to kind of loop back and, and work together. I think it's just about collaboration and. Those are your relationships in the community and they're really important to me to help frame a lot of decision-making and has, again, a sense shift. So a perfect example would be the train derailment of each one of you had very different questions, which I think. Makes what makes my job interesting is, is you have, you kind of send me in all three different directions and that's great. And then I did speak to. The county manager that day and the emergency manager and sheriff. So there were lots of different moving parts and. But I would not, if you have an existing relationship or you hear information from the city manager. Because frankly, we're, it's a small community. Share it with me if, if it's something different than what. I may be reporting back to you because I may have different information. So that's a perfect example, like in an emergency situation that. Any way that we can talk and clarify, that makes it great.
Yeah.
Only one lens, right?
I think the goal of this section is to not have privilege or have. Conversations with people outside of your A, B, C, D, whatever, and not. Share it with anybody else like that. It's saying, don't, don't talk to somebody and then never tell anybody else that you talked to them. So. I, I think that it's important, you know, that information sharing. Yeah, if I heard something different, I would share it with you, et cetera, et cetera. So I just. That, that part caught my attention and I wanted to talk about it and it sounds, it sounds reasonable.
I just want, can I add on to that? I have faith in the three of us, this particular board. I think we all have. Good judgment on what's appropriate and what's not appropriate. So I would not worry about any of the three of us. I think, you know, that's maybe not true for everyone who's ever been a commissioner or an elected official, but. For our current board, I feel good about that. So.
Yeah.
And I would just, you know, Rachel, please feel free to. Come talk to me if you feel like I'm ever, you know, if anything I do in, in this regard ever makes you uncomfortable, please, of course, come and let me know. Yeah. So can I, is that good on there, on that topic? Can we move on to another one?
Did you have something to add, Rick?
Oh, I don't want to get in front. I, I just had a comment on one of this, and maybe this is for Rachel and Greg, three point one, three on page. But would you like to maybe take this opportunity to change that first piece to say in accordance with the fiscal health requirements? Or the county administration shall operate as the budget officer? Because this alludes to two separate bodies. So since you guys are in the process of. Modifying that, it might be good just to clean that up.
What's the?
So three point one, three at the top, page forty-five. Under budget, it says in accordance with the fiscal health requirements set forth herein. I would say the county administrator shall operate as the budget officer.
Okay.
Or operating as a budget officer.
Or operate, yeah. That's better. County ministry operating as a budget.
More power.
I like that. So just remove the and and put operating as.
Okay.
I just caught that. I know where we're even talking about that. So it might be just a good chance to get that.
Be consistent. Okay.
I think we're all good with that. Did you have another item?
No.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes, I just wanted to, let's see, go over the chair piece. I was on it and then I scrolled away, but basically just wanted to acknowledge that. The responsibilities and the roles of the chair, and I just want to acknowledge that I realize and I'm aware of the fact that the chair is not an executive power. You know, I'm not, I'm, the chair does not make, you know, unilateral decisions or direct staff is one, there's still one commissioner. And so I would invite my other two commissioners, if at any point you feel like. You have any concerns about me currently as chair, please feel free to talk to me about it. I, I. Want us to have good relationships and I don't want. There to be any tension or anything between us. So if that ever happens, please come knock on my door.
Anything else?
I, I'm, I lost also. So where it talks about how. How much time a commissioner can bother a director? And Rachel, you touched on this earlier. And did we, did it have a set time in there?
I'm looking, what page are we on? I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the markup one, chair.
Yeah, I, I'm not finding it now.
Which, which item, two point?
It's policy two point oh, board staff relationships. Then it's toward the bottom, the third paragraph of two point one point one is page sixty-six of the packet.
Okay. I'm in the red box, so. No, no, I'm going, I'm, I'm getting it.
I'm sorry, more, you said two.
Two point.
Two point one point one.
Okay. I'll read it. The county administrator will make every reasonable effort to accommodate requests for information. But if in the opinion of the county administrator, such requests will require an amount of staff time or resources that would be detrimental to other necessities. The county administrator may ask the full board for guidance. As a general rule, any request by an individual board member. That may consume more than eight hours of staff time will be brought to the full board for guidance. So the board will avoid giving direction to persons who report directly or indirectly to the county administrator. If you want some examples of why this is probably in here.
I used to get only one hour, so this is.
Very early on, I was recognized, I recognized a couple of my directors. Were being asked sometimes a curiosity question, and then I would see that they would do this tremendous amount. Of research and response, four or five page response to an individual commissioner. And I would look at it and it would also be, oh, maybe Sunday night. And so for me. Managing lots of different folks and their time, I want to go, is that the best use of that particular director's time who. You know, we all want to please people. We all want to be able to give really in-depth. Thoughtfulness to it, but at the same time, is that the best use of time? And then I get. Something wasn't done possibly, or that type of work. So if, if that comes along, you know, we just want to be able to manage their time commitment. Because there could be other things going on that I really need them to be focusing on, you know.
Yeah, I, I think this is actually, I'll take this opportunity to say, I sometimes send out emails after hours or during the weekend, just because. I had a conversation with a constituent or something like that. I do not want a response. On the weekend or after hours, I do not want staff to be working outside of their regular hours to respond to my questions and, you know. Unless it's part of their pre-planned work schedule and they want to be working that like, I, I'm not going to stop someone. Who's salary from, from working the amount of time they want to put into the job. But I'm just saying, I don't want people to feel obligated to respond to me. Over the weekend or anything like that.
No, Chair Wise is very good about that. Many times she actually, in her correspondence will say. I would like a response back. Today, or I would like a response in by Friday, or I'd like a response in the next two weeks. So again, it's like that managing expectations normally in, in my one-on-ones with the chair. Well, Commissioner Wise at the time, she usually kind of gave me those deadlines, which, which helps manage. Manage time of whether it's an urgent response or something that's more. You know, no rush.
Great.
Is that, is that a fair way to summarize? Commissioner Wise, what we, that's how you, you communicate with me.
Yeah. So I will just say that I think eight hours is too much time.
It's a lot.
All three of us could take up, you know, three days worth of one director's work week. I personally wouldn't want a director to spend eight hours on something just for me. I would, I would feel like that's inappropriate. I would want that to come from the board. So I just wonder how the other commissioners feel about lowering that threshold.
I, I, go ahead.
I'm fine with lowering it. I, I do think that. It, it's been my experience, even in the short time that I've been here, that there will be more. There will be a higher necessity. I mean, it also, it doesn't give you a timeframe as well. It doesn't say eight hours a month, eight hours a week. It just says eight hours. So I don't know. What, what the context for those eight hours are, but I, I would be fine reducing it to, to less than that with, without border control.
I'm guessing, remembering. That was a reduction of what, what, what was happening. So it was. Kind of a compromise and putting. Putting an actual number to. To request. And so I, I had the same thought. I mean, that's, that's a lot. And I'm not quite sure how to monitor her.
I'll talk to you. But also, we can also bring it to a goal setting for information sharing. If, if it's one particular commissioner has something that they really, really want to drive down and understand. No problem, you know, maybe that's a better use of time. And, you know, I'll use the health director, for example. Maybe we really do need behavioral health there to kind of answer the question together, but she's got to manage. Those individuals' calendars as well. So no problem having a deep dive discussion, but maybe it isn't more of a public. There, maybe it is something that all the commissioners care about or don't care about.
And I assume this is a guideline and, and so. Making a commissioner making a request doesn't really know what. How long it's going to take.
The best option is honestly, if, if there is something that you reach out, just copy me. Or if it is a, a relationship where you make a phone call or you stop them in the hallway and. You said, you know, just keep that in mind. That's, that's, I guess, how you'd have to look at it. If, if it is going to be a, a big time. Commitment. So.
Do, do we want to modify this number?
I think that would be good. I, I mean, I personally wouldn't want staff to spend even like two hours even seems like kind of a lot. But I'm open to, Rachel, what you think, what the other commissioners think.
My, my concern with two hours is that's. Has the potential of running into responding to something and then setting up a meeting to talk about it. And having that, having a meeting to, to discuss something. I'm, I think that I'd like. Four was the first thing that came to mind. That is a lot, but it's, it is half of what we currently have. And I, that was the first number that came to my mind.
Once again, I'd like to bring this every year to you, what we can do in the beginning of the year, and then we can play with. If more hours and circumstances come up. As, as we build out and, and I'll get feedback as well with leadership, if, if there is something. But again. I think all of our styles with this present board, we do have a back and forth, very collaborative environment with it, that we want to support the organization. Leadership as well as find out what we need to happen. So I, I am hoping that let's keep it loose a little. No public policy papers, please.
I had the same. Four hours number in mind, just because it's, it's too much. Four might be the right number. Probably what, what's more important is just what Rachel's talking about is. Keeping people informed and. Commissioner. Is abusing the, the. Contacts with department heads and that. The county administrator should handle that and. Get, get that under control. Put a number down. I, I don't think this is, as far as I know, this hasn't been enforced. Probably the same thing will happen with if we put four hours down. But, but just what are the expectations and that? Be careful. Asking. Department heads or other staff to. Check out something for you without you, you having any notion. What that entails.
Sometimes we want to please every community member, constituent with a problem that they have. And we, we, we do, we want to solve all the problems, but sometimes we can't, whether it's becomes it's a state issue. Or a different county's problem. And, you know, it's important to us to have that work, but when I see. Especially a director, you know, and it takes up, it's taking, and I'm counting their time and I, and I do say to them, and how long did that take? You realize that something else gave some meetings were canceled to try to drive down and find that solution. So I guess that would just be another thing I wanted to flag as, because we speak to them and we do want to work and, and solve problems. But there's only a certain level that we can, we can get there. So. But I'm fine comfortable at four that I could start flagging the commissioners if that happened, but I don't want. I want all three commissioners to have relationships with our directors and our departments. It's really, really important when we want. Big projects to happen and there's delays or we fall into a workforce shortage, that operations will be compromised and. As thought partners and, and setting the policies, sometimes deadlines change. And we need to be able to articulate that to the public and again, manage expectations when. Things get, get interrupted and we, we do have interruptions in, in government. We do respond to crises and. Then sometimes things, our sustainability goals will be. Not put on the back burner, but sometimes different priorities will happen. And so I want, I want that flexibility and an understanding of, of. All parts of county government and how it runs. So.
So I have one other question. When it comes to, so Rachel, you mentioned just copy you on emails to directors. This is one thing I've been sort of unsure about. Um, this is one thing I've been sort of unsure about. So some of your, some reports go to you, Rachel, some reports go to Rick. Is it, I mean, I've, I think in practice, I've just been copying both of you because I'm not exactly sure. Which one of, who, which one of you is their reports and, you know, if, if one of you was already. Potentially working on the situation, has more background on it.
That's perfectly fine. Uh, Rick and I work hand in glove every single day, so. Even if you did have a question, say in juvenile, um, if it raises up to your level, um, Rick immediately. Uh, reports up and, and we're kind of looped in. I certainly hope you can, uh, I want to get you folks the right response. The most accurate response. And if Rick has the more immediate uh, process, because sometimes it's a back and forth. I, I hope you're very, very comfortable with getting a, a response quicker or more concise from, from Rick. Uh, but it's certainly like, not just a divide and conquer uh, portfolio. It's about providing as much. Uh, guidance and support with the departments. And I think this model has added so much more capacity. To be able to look at some of our, you know, as we say, one thousand feet up where we want to be in, in a county. Um, that allows us to do that. And um, so, yes, please continue with your process of. Writing to both of us. It's.
Okay.
It's not a competition. Yeah, we're very, very comfortable with one another. If one has more information, then let's go for it. Yeah.
And then Rick, if, if it doesn't apply to you, you can just, you know, click delete.
Yeah, no, I, again, I, I think we both try to make a priority uh, as you get uh, messages uh, that were responsive to you. So like Rachel said, one way or another, uh, many of the times they're, they're in my portfolio. And so I think Rachel's been very comfortable with me. Responding to you. If you guys are good with that, and then I keep her, of course, appraised, but if it is something of a higher level, then of course we'll elevate it. And discuss it together, but I think that's worked pretty well so far.
So far.
Certainly, certainly let us know if you're not getting what you need.
No, I am. You guys are great. One more question that just came up in my mind. So when we, I mean, the directors are aware that you have asked us to copy you.
Yes.
Okay, good, because especially when we have like a new director, there's been times where I sent them an email, I copy you. And then I just, I have this moment where I'm like, I hope they don't think that I'm like, asking them this question. And by the way, I'm copying your boss, so you better do it.
Well, and the other thing to keep in mind is this um, position as deputy. County administrator is less than a year old and, and uh, a work in progress.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, and we'll be presenting with you a little bit of a reorg of our B O C structure, which I think you'll be very happy with, which will. Really give you some, an idea of, of directions of, of what everybody does in their cubicles uh, as we move forward, as they report up, so.
Great. Anything else? If not, we'll move on uh, five point three, discussion of procedures for Board of Commissioners' response to. Uh, community members.
Did, did you guys want to uh, make a motion on the leadership policies?
It didn't, it, it said in the packet not to make a motion, but I don't know if you want, want.
I, I think we can make the edits and I'll just pass it along for your personal, you know, uh, bookshelf.
I mean, I think this actually might be good for a motion, just since we're reducing the.
Hours.
Powers of the chair or of the commission.
Uh, all right, I move to approve the leadership policies and practices as amended today.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, now we will move on to five point three. Uh, Board of Commissioners' response to community members. Who is taking the lead on that?
Go ahead. It's the chair.
Okay, sorry, I was just gonna say, our, you know, our past practice has been that the chair, whenever we get an email that is sent to the board, all three of us. Past practice has been for the chair to respond. And I'm good with continuing that. I also want to um, you know, of course, any commissioner can respond to any email that is sent to them. Um, you know, it's not like you need to feel like, oh, well, Nancy's going to respond, I shouldn't respond. And I, you know, sometimes we get emails that are sent individually to all three of us. And in my mind, I feel like. I mean, you can use your own best judgment, you know, you're your own commissioner, elected by the people. If I get an email that's sent directly to me and nobody else, I feel like it might, it's most likely because that person does want a response from me. But, you know, y'all are grownups, so you can. Make that decision for yourself. Thoughts?
Yeah, as long as you have the capacity, you feel that you have the capacity to respond to all of the um. You know, to all, all of those, because that's a lot, or it can be a lot. So if, if you, if it's ever too, like, too many people are emailing everybody. Um, I don't know if we, how we divvy that out or do that, but I want to be able to support you in that, in that position. But I also agree that if someone emails me one-on-one, I, I typically respond because I assume they wanted to talk to me.
But, but we have no way of knowing that all three of us, i- if only your name is listed.
Yeah.
We have no way of knowing uh, that all three of us have been contacted with the same information. Uh, we also don't, unless we're CC'd on the response, we don't know if there's been a response. Uh, and I've talked about this basically since I've been here. That uh, we need some kind of tracking system. Uh, because the last thing we want to have happen is, oh, I thought you were going to do that or had done that. And, and, and we don't know. Uh, other than I have been known to uh, check in next door and did you, did you get this? And did you respond? And which, which is uh. Not the most efficient way of doing business. It, it works. Um, so uh, at some point uh, in the next. Month or two, it'd be nice to uh, check in with I D. They, they have been tasked with, with uh. Setting up a tracking system. And I'm not sure, and. I think some progress has been made, but uh, we don't have a system up and running.
Yeah, I, I guess a question for Commissioner Wise. Are you, when you say you're going to respond to the emails that go out to the three commissioners? Do you intend to CC the other two on it or B C C S, just so we know that it's been responded to?
Well, let's talk about that. Um, it, I think. Sometimes, yes, but then we have, there are sometimes issues or concerns about um, you know, serial meetings or quorum. So depending on the content, you know, if I were to tell someone how. What I'm thinking on an issue that we're going to be voting on, maybe I wouldn't, you know, copy you guys.
Got you, um. Okay.
And many, many times, you know, responding can look like, hey, thank you for reaching out and taking the time to email us. Um, I'll try to track down an answer for you and I'll get back to you. Um, and then there might be times, and then, you know, probably talking to staff and getting back to them. If it's a staff response and I see it, most likely I can also forward it to the two of you or ask staff to. Um, if it's um. Let's see, where was I going with that? My train of thought is going off the rails, um.
Yeah, I, I think that I, I completely understand the, the policy thing, because that, that there's a concern, you don't want to have a serial. Meeting over email where you say, I'm going to vote yes on this. Um, is there a way that you can, like. Acknowledge that you got the email and say, I'll email you separately, my personal thoughts on this to avoid quorum, like you can have a uh. Uh, you can have a draft, a draft save. It's like, you're asking my personal opinion, I as the chair am responding to you saying we received it. And I will follow up with my own personal opinion because of quorum reasons.
Sure, yeah, I can do that.
Not to make you write more emails.
That's totally, that's totally fine. I get it. That way you guys know that someone responded and, I mean, I, I have missed emails on occasion. So that's totally fair. Um. The other thing, oh, so, so, you know, in the past, maybe a chair has said, you know, oh, hey, you have a question about, you know, a bike path and. Commissioner Malone knows all about the bike path, so I'm gonna send you his way. Or, you know, maybe Gabe knows all about this new thing and I can send you his way.
Yeah, I, great.
You go ahead.
Oh, I, I'm just gonna bring up one other uh, area, maybe a little bit reversed to this. Uh, we're talking a lot about when things come to all of you, but then there's things where it comes independently to you. It's the same question. Uh, where there maybe is a little bit of a, I don't know, answer shopping to find out. So I guess just thinking about. There is those situations that occur to where we may have a, a group that, you know, is actively trying to. You know, get some direction or, or get answers. And um, so I don't know how you work to coordinate that, if that's, if that's an issue. That may happen more.
Yeah.
Future.
I know that can be a sticky thing, but also on the other hand, we are. Three different people, we're elected by the people, we have three different ways of thinking and, you know, so. I think it's okay. I think it's actually better sometimes for people to hear varied opinions from us versus one. Sort of like baked response that may seem disingenuous.
Yeah, I think that um, if, if we are, if someone is asking for answers that we. Are specifically asking staff like, staff for, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to just let, let everybody know staff's response to things. Um, but I agree with Nancy that if, if, if we come up with one answer that we all share to eat, to constituents. Who have been frustrating in the past or causing issues or whatever, uh, that'll, that'll just escalate the issue because it'll look like we've all. Conspired behind their back to come up with a single answer. So I think that um, I, I think that if it's a staff response. Great, send, send everybody, wait, like I just uh, emailed, I got a constituent email about fireworks and I plan on sending. Um, the responses I got from the city or from, sorry, county attorney uh, to, to everybody when I, when I get a moment. So just like, stuff like that, I feel like sending out those emails makes sense.
And I think all three of us got the same.
I figured I, that, when you said, what if we all get one separately? I'm like, I bet this person reached out to all three of us about fireworks. Yeah.
And that's, I think, a, a classic example to Commissioner Shepherd's point is, a lot of these questions are sometimes maybe around process. So I saw that you've got all the answers in terms of what the process is. So we all obviously want to ensure that the constituent won't gets. A consistent answer about what that process is as opposed to, to three different. I like your idea of. You get, we did the homework, we talked to the staff and then on all three of you know, okay, this is sort of the consistent answer. Because it's really, it's prescriptive. It's not, there, there's sometimes you guys get questions about your opinion. Uh, and certainly you all may have your difference opinion and, and certainly can provide that. But then there are questions, a lot of questions about, well, I don't like this process. And, and, and you have to find out, well, then what is the process? And just making sure that people get the, 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 the consistent answer. I know, it's, it's hard, you know, you, you're getting so many different types of things and it feels like everybody works together pretty well to, to make sure that we give you.
Only been ten days.
Yeah.
We could blow up, I don't know. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I feel, you know, I, this is my second term, you know, I'm going to the year five of, of this. Uh, being the process and so far to my knowledge, there hasn't been any major issues with it. Um, so, but I'm also open to input as time goes on, if either one of you are uncomfortable with something or have some tips for me. To do a better job, uh, just let me know.
Well, I, I'll go back to, uh, we need a better uh, process. Uh, we can be more efficient. And I would guess the majority of uh, requests that we get are really for. Uh, uh, departments and uh, well, you got to start somewhere, so start with commissioners. Because they have all the answers. Well, that's kind of true, but uh, not really. Uh, what they want is um, somebody in public works to uh, talk about a road or uh. And um. More than probably ten, twelve years ago, uh, when telephones used to get used. The uh, sixty-eight-hundred number was busy uh, and uh. Uh, I wasn't here, but uh, I think a lot of times uh, the front desk who answered the phone is. Uh, oh, okay, you got a road question. Well, there's a commissioner here, would you like to talk to them? And uh, sure. Um, and then the commissioner was, well, I don't know anything about your road. Uh, you should talk to public works. And uh, we evolved to a phone tree. Where the first thing you did is uh, tried to figure out what department you wanted to talk to. And we don't have that for email. And so we are, uh, and, and. Um, once again, I will speculate the volume of email goes up every year. And we, we haven't uh, done anything to uh, become more efficient. And, and I think we uh, need to, and I would like to have another chat with I T uh, in the. Relatively near, near future, what's, because I, I think there are some solutions. Uh, that they know are available and, but uh, we haven't gone. The last mile, as they say, to uh, um, make any kind of. Uh, decision or look at what our options are, what the cost might be to uh, be more efficient. But uh, I, I just don't think our current system, well, it, it works, but I think it can work. Uh, a fair amount better. So. Uh, and uh, we do have uh, subject experts and they should be. Really the first ones contacted, not, not uh. Uh, where we say thank you for your email and here you should talk to. Uh, the health department or wha- whatever the um, subject matter is, uh, subject expert is.
Nancy, did you get what you needed from us?
Yes, thank you.
Did, did you get more than you needed?
Um, you know, I'm, I'm here for it. I'm here for it.
Just checking. All right, uh, five point four is uh, another run at uh, twenty twenty-five. Many assignments of the commissioners. And we have a, did you get the printout, the latest printout, Nancy?
Um, I think Maura emailed it to me. I don't have a hard copy. I have it, I, I have it.
It, it, it's in the packet, but.
Are you in your office?
Yes.
Over virtually.
I'm just quarantining myself, because, you know.
Wait, 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 take that.
Yes.
Uh, maybe while you're getting this uh, uh, Nancy, if you would, well. May, maybe take a, a quick run through this, but uh, I think. It, it might be easier if we were all in the same room at the same time, if, if there are any. Uh, major uh, discussions that we need to, uh, need to have.
Good, well, when she gets back to the computer, I'll make a suggestion. Okay. Um, great. So I think Pat just suggested we delay part of this till when we're in the same room, but I, there is. I, I think there's a little bit of urgency on approving the stuff we've already agreed on. Because I'm supposed to be at a W C J C meeting tomorrow and I, while I'm allowed, you know, I can show up there. I don't know if I'm allowed to vote unless we as a board approve that I'm the person to go. So.
Have, have we already approved?
I, for sure. Did we?
I, I'm not sure.
Get the gavel, Pat. Make it so.
I got it.
Mara, did we, did the board approve after the December tenth meeting, the first draft of this?
The direction was for me to come back with a new version, so that I get any specific approval. The direction was for me to come back with a new version, so there would be any specific approval of that sort of preliminary assignment.
Okay, so, yeah, so.
Well, I I would suggest taking a run through it and see how smoothly it goes.
Okay.
Uh, because we do have some other uh business to attend to and we're a little behind schedule and and that that part's okay, but just.
If if we can have a little discussion, because uh
Absolutely.
Text from um Sean Wire, who says he needs a commissioner for the SMMP meeting in two weeks.
Oh.
So that is a little uh time sensitive as well.
That was on my my list too. Uh, that's what I'm saying, we can uh do a, at least a quick run through, because I think we uh did a pretty good job on the first round of uh dividing things up and and you know, there's time, let's just, you know, find, hopefully, find tunes.
Okay, so I think it was, is it just the SMMP? And the uh Corvallis Urban Renewal Agency, were those the two that we are deciding on?
Rick did have another one um that you just mentioned, this was about the Housing Alliance. Um, oh, there was a uh email that went out yesterday that asked for one person to give input uh to the Housing Alliance on behalf of the county. And we didn't know who that one person was, so.
Yeah, and Commissioner Wise and I also chatted about this as well, uh, you know, historically, we, you know, we're memberships of, or a membership with the Housing Alliance. Uh, it is sort of a statewide group in which we have participated, but it has typically been assigned to Health Department and Julie Arena as the staffer. And so what had happened is Housing Alliance is trying to formulate their legislative agenda, so they're asking all members to vote. So the question came up is, should Julie vote in the Health Department or should this come back to the Board of Commissioners? I think the way that Zan, who I think had the Housing Alliance on her portfolio, had recommended that Julie could be empowered to to make the decision, and that's where Chair Wise and I had landed on to at least get into the deadline uh yesterday. But going forward, uh, just, I guess it's a question of how how do you want to represent in that? Is that something that one of the commissioners actually wants to physically be a part of, or is it that you're comfortable with the continued approach of having staff? Uh, and then maybe reply, I suggested maybe reporting back periodically uh to you all about what's happening with the Housing Alliance, because it looks like they got a pretty aggressive agenda for this this upcoming session.
Sure, and I'll just say the reason that I was comfortable, um oh, you know, saying Julie, we can continue to, we can continue to operate as we have been operating. Um, I think that group deals with a lot of issues that are very technical in nature and so it's best to have a, you know, staff person that is very knowledgeable in that position, rather than having a commissioner having to go back and forth and talk to staff about it a bunch, like eliminate the middleman.
I think what we could do, if you guys are comfortable, and Commissioner Shepherd is sort of the point person, that that's since it's on his list here, is that we could continue to do that, but I think, you know, if it's a policy type thing, um, like these legislative concept could be, I think, as I told Health Department, we should probably try to get into this a little bit more so that we can consult with the commissioners on, especially if there's anything that jumps out as concerning. I didn't say anything that was really concerning, but um, that might be the approach that we can take going forward.
Yeah, I'm happy empowering staff to to take those votes and do those things. I would like the board as a whole to consider, if we ever have to like get behind endorsing legislative concepts or supporting, ranking with ones that we're supporting. I think that would be something I'd like us to do if we can, but the actual casting of the ballot in an emergency situation, stuff like that, absolutely, like they I, like Commissioner Wise said, if I had to vote on that, I would be asking them how I should vote on that. And then why am I bothering to do it myself? Um, so, yeah, because they're, they know what they're doing.
Uh, and you know, Julie also works closely with the city of Corvallis, who was our partner in a lot, in these, you know, items in the coordinated homeless response office. So there, she can bring in that factor too. I mean, I keep saying Julie, but I guess we should say staff member, because it might not be Julie, maybe, I don't know.
Yep, uh, well, I I think that makes sense and probably the um caveat has been mentioned is uh, any uh connection with uh legislation or potential legislation, that that should be on our agenda, you know. Uh, directing our um government relations, what's uh, what our priorities are. But that can be a separate and probably relatively small part of this effort. So we get on, on on that. And I guess as long as we've jumped to the last page, parking lot.
Yeah.
Uh, SMMP has been mentioned, I guess I would say I I have been uh tracking on this, uh, and at our last meeting, uh, I was the only elected uh there, which was a little surprising since it's a regional uh meeting, but uh I would be glad to uh continue in that role uh depending on others' interest.
Yeah, I'm, I think that that would make, that would make sense to me. It's uh, long-term planning and um, I think to, you know, having, being the senior one here and having done done this work and been a part of this for a while, makes less sense for me to cut, to come in and do it. And I don't know about Commissioner Wise's interest in it, but um, I I think, I think that makes sense.
And Pat, you can have it.
I I would.
Uh, Rick. And I just might add, for the, for Commissioner Wise and Commissioner Shepherd's purpose, obviously, this is a budget initiative that you all or the commissioners had approved last time. Just because Commissioner Wise sit on it, you're gonna hear a lot about this, uh, and we will, you know, report out periodically. So I just wanted to reassure both of you, because I know it's an important issue for all of us. And you'll get probably more than enough information uh as we, as we go forward.
Well, and one of the goals is to uh have our regional partners help with the with the financing of this effort. So uh, it's maybe early days uh with that, but uh, we, I think, it's accurate to say we've made uh great progress in not turning this into a regional issue, or I guess more accurately, getting our regional partners to recognize that it is a regional uh effort.
We have a Washington County connection.
We also, uh, I I met with uh community development staff yesterday and they were looking for a commissioner for their um, the comprehensive plan advisory group. Okay.
Their first meeting is January thirtieth.
Yeah, and so I, that one should be on our parking lot list as well as we, that we discussed now.
So I, I have interest in that role.
What, what's the title?
It is Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group.
And that's the city and county?
Um, I think it's the counties um with our our comp plan.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is the advisory group that's guiding and will be a part of the whole comprehensive project.
Yeah, I think.
In community development.
Yeah, that'll be the lead staffers, yes.
I support, yeah, I'm I'm supportive of Commissioner Wise taking that up, I think, oh, okay, uh, I sorry, that's distracting. Uh, I I'm, I'm very supportive of you taking this up, I know you're all about long range and long range planning and that kind of stuff, so that's great.
And and you're probably hoping that I'll give you the Corvallis Urban Renewal in exchange, huh?
I didn't say that.
It's fine, I I've thought about it, you can, you can do it.
Okay. Look at that, we did a thing.
Oh, and that's another parking lot, so uh, that's you. All right, well, we're making great progress.
Uh, the NACO stuff, is that really? The the top two NACO things, public lands and Western interstate region public lands, are those actually things we point somebody to, or did somebody do it at one point and they live here now?
Aren't those, I think you have to, well, some of their committees, AOC appoints you to. I'm not sure if that's for all of them.
I I I think um, probably if you expressed interest, I I'm not sure what the current representation is. I I see Annabelle Harmio's name, so uh, we haven't been right on top of that one. Uh, and that that may be uh appropriate, what, uh, I've had some contact, uh, and if uh, a county has significant public plans, they're interested in, that's not our um, situation a- as far as the uh, the NACO public lands, you know, portion, I I think we can I think we can keep Annabelle there as our representative. Uh, and monitor it, but I think that's the group that, you know, when Congress is in session, will fly in uh commissioners from all over the country to uh lobby on behalf of uh various subjects, subjects that apply to their, you know, public plans and how the government isn't federal government isn't treating them fairly and uh, that sort of thing. So are we okay uh, not uh being a necker?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, some five.
And then the NACO Western Interstate Region Public Lands, which seems like a subset of that, but.
Well, so I attend, I historically have attended that uh conference, yearly conference in May, and for a while I was um attending some of their virtual meetings, but they changed the time and I lost track of it. But I was not formally appointed to it, um, but I'm happy to keep kind of on top of it and I can always ask AOC for a formal um appointment as well, if you prefer that.
You would uh be willing to continue to monitor it and then uh check with the AOC or NACO to see if uh, if you want to be appointed.
Yeah, in the past Mallory said, just let me know, I'll make it happen and it's not something I've gotten around to formalizing.
Okay, yeah, whatever you want to do with that, that's great. Okay, we did it. Look at that. Um, oh, there was, sorry, there was one thing undermined that said, uh, the, um, where is it?
You were still reading words.
Yes, and I'll, I'll take that, so it said Shepherd will consider taking, I'm happy to do that if you're.
We need to chat and I can give you a long and painful history.
Okay.
Which one is that?
Uh, Norios Oregon Workforce Investment Board, it's middle of um, Pat's page, and it says Shepherd will consider taking.
And they have a meeting this month.
Okay.
Okay. I don't see any other questions. Did we actually get through this? Whoop. Anything?
Certainly. To make it a.
Well, I was just gonna ask a question in terms of, maybe this was to Maura, and it's only a question that I get from some of the directors. Once this is all finalized, will we send this out to all of the directors? Okay, that way they're just again very clear on who who they should contact if they're the staffing.
And it should go up on the website as well.
Wait, thank you.
One more, sorry. Making a page for that.
I I did have uh, a couple of um, questions, uh, and this isn't uh required that we do it, but i- if I got it correct, uh, we don't have any anybody on the, uh, that's going to the AOC Governance uh Steering Committee, Governance and Finance, I mean, Finance.
I think that was supposed to be me, I didn't make it to any of them yesterday, but I think the governance one was supposed to be me.
Was that you? I thought it was supposed to be me. Do we switch?
I, you know, maybe.
Because I thought you were public safety and something else. I didn't go either, because I've been sick, so.
I, public safety is a different one.
Yeah, so I I have no idea, I'm just going back, same piece of paper, so.
I I think we can uh figure this out, you know, between ourselves.
Okay.
The, I I don't think, and and it's not, uh, if you want to, you don't have to be appointed. If you want to go to the meeting, you show up and go to the meeting, so, but uh it it was one that, uh, I I think, uh, it it might be to our benefit to at least uh uh, stand the agenda, especially with the legislature in session to uh uh, monitor what what they're uh working on.
So, in the interest of making this official so that I can a- actually have a vote tomorrow, um, may I make a motion?
Sure.
Absolutely.
I move to approve the committee assignments as presented with the following changes. Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group, Commissioner Wise, South Corvallis Urban Renewal Agency, Commissioner Shepherd, now with Commissioner Shepherd, SMMP, Commissioner Malone, and Housing Alliance for Staff, and I wrote this out and I'll send it to her, okay?
Okay.
Uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Well done. Uh, item five point five, discussion regarding Board of Commissioners meetings protocols.
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Thanks for allowing me the time today, I know it's been a long meeting, so uh, I just want to briefly overview a few things that I had been thinking about um for a while now about public meetings and um, how the counties meetings currently operate. Um, I have a few suggestions and, you know, some of these are the chair's prerogative be- uh, because she gets to run the meetings. Some of these are items that we determine as a group, um, and I'm just gonna kind of go through them quickly and um i- if that's all right, and then discussion, however people want to discuss, that's the chair's prerogative as well, but um I'm, I'll, I'll start, um, there was a conversation at the last leadership meeting about uh professionalizing and identifying people um during meetings. Um, it has been my experience that work sessions or goal-setting meetings like this are a little less formal, which is great. But when we have our Board of Commissioner meetings, um, and we're, or our regular meetings and we're up there and people are down here, my suggestion was having name tags or not, uh, name plates, something like that for staff as well, so that the camera catches who's talking and what their title is, and then those of us up there um, can refer to them by title as well, because sometimes I forget, you know, Sean's full title. Uh, and I, so that that kind of stuff, so it would help us um, go through that, it would professionalize it a little more, county administrator, commissioner, those kind of things. As, and instead of saying April, saying Director Hall and things like that. Um, so I I think that name plates would be helpful for that, or name tents.
Can we talk about that for a minute?
Sure.
I was also thinking there might be an IT solution where there'd be a graphic that could be shown on it as well, or, I mean, wouldn't that?
I'm not sure if that would be cheaper, because what you'd also have to do is you would have uh, the people running the meeting would have to implement that graphic as opposed to somebody grabbing their name tent and putting it in front of them. So, you know, I, I'm not opposed to an IT solution, I feel like that might in in surprisingly end up being more expensive than printing out.
Fair enough.
Or buying things.
Would that just, I mean, county uh officials, not uh guests or folks who come in from, I don't know, LC and they want, yeah.
Correct, this is like when, when Rick is giving us a report or when we get a budget report, you know, like having it having their name in front of, in front of them. having their name in front of, in front of them, so I, I think that that's, would be helpful.
And that's, that's a great idea, Gabe, and it sounds familiar to me. I think that's maybe what the city of Corvallis has been doing.
Lot of cities do it, so, you know.
Okay, good. Um, and yeah, what they, you know, they just have like all the directors' name tags, kind of like what we have up. They're a little, they're like paper, like, you know, card stock or whatever, and you just keep them on, in one of the cupboards over there and pull them out the meeting, lay, set them all out, and the director walks up, they just grab their name and set it down, and go put it back when they're done.
I think it's great.
Um, uh, to something Commissioner Malone was saying earlier, I actually had this on my list as well, formalizing a public comment process, which is similar to that, I think, similar to what you were talking about. Um, my understanding is that there's not a formal way to sign up for public comment ahead of time, is that correct?
No, that is correct. Um, Civic Plus will offer us an online opportunity, um, for that, we, but right now we do not have an online process.
Great, so I'm, sounds like that's gonna come on board in the next month or so. So.
Like several months.
No, I don't know. It's coming along.
It's, yeah, coming, it's coming.
The, the public comment portion is, you know, impacted.
Okay, I apologize.
Do we have, so in, do we have a policy around public comment, like a, a board policy on that?
I can, we do not. I don't know if it's a policy, it's a process, but, uh, I don't know if there's an actual board policy.
Typically, it's been up to the chair and different chairs have wanted to do it differently, so for example, I bel- the way I like to do it is to limit comment to three minutes per person. Um, but past chairs have not wanted to necessarily limit people, and so that's why we have not formalized it. Um, and I'm o- I'm okay with that.
Okay, I, I understand, I understand the flexibility for chair, and like I said, a lot of this is up, up to the chair, um, and as chair you are, you can grant time to, and extend time and all that stuff. I like having the, I personally like having a bit more formal policy. We, the county has experienced Zoom bombing, the city has experienced Zoom bombing and what that, uh, having some sort of policy, even if the policy says the time allotment is up to the chair, um, that allows us to get, say that when we kick someone out of a meeting, we followed a policy and procedure because someone was being racist online and yelling slurs at, at, at people, um, so that's, you know, that, that's why I would want to err on the side of having a document written down about how we expect the public to interact with us and us to interact with them during comment time. Um, does that kind of explain a little more why I was, yeah?
Yeah, no, that makes sense, um. I'm just mulling it over.
Okay, yeah, and, and, and part of the reason I'm bringing this up today, I didn't expect motions and all that stuff today. I wanted to bring up my thoughts on, on public meetings, so just sharing in a public manner. Um.
I will, I will say, and I, we, I haven't, I don't remember what the last agenda was, but for our board meetings that have public comment, is there a, in the past, I think we've had a little blurb that says, you know, comments may be limited to three minutes.
Yeah.
And I can't remember if that's the current practice, but I would like for us to move forward with that as long as the next year that I'm chair. Um, to just say public comment is limited to three minutes.
Yep.
If we can do that.
That language does appear on the written sign-in sheet for those folks who, who come in person a- a- and sign up for public comment.
Okay, if we could put it on the agenda too, that'd be great, cause if someone's looking at the agenda saying, oh, that's a topic I'm interested in, I want to go comment, and they prepare this ten-minute speech, you know, takes some hours to put it together, and then they get here and they're like, oh, I only get three minutes. You know, they, they could just be better prepared, I think, if we, if they see that ahead of time.
Mm-hmm.
We're raising that on layering the agenda and standard language.
It's, um, I'm sorry, I'd have to look at, I'm actually, I know it's on the sign-in sheet, I'm, I don't recall that it's specifically on the actual agenda itself, no.
Right, it's, it's not a big deal, but I think, would it be, I mean, seems like something we could do.
I, I, I'm, would be supportive of having that on the agenda page, just so people know ahead of time. Um, so this gets, eh, the next ones are a little more um, going against, not, not against, they, they are a change in what has been practiced for a long time, and I understand that there will be, there will be some hesitation about things, but these are things that I, I think are important to bring up. Um, I personally do not think we should go around and introduce everyone in the room at the beginning of every meeting, and I'll get into why. Um, I think that especially, I don't mind introducing staff, but I think that people should have the right to observe their government without having to declare that, who they are and where they're from and why they're here. I think that having people sit in the back um, at a meeting, listen to and watch their board meeting and be able to leave without having to talk about why they're here, I think that's, um, I think that's an important right that people should have to be in person without feeling pressured to talk about themselves. Um, it also protect, potentially prevents us from yielding the floor to someone who is belligerent before they get to their three minutes. Um, the example I've been thinking about, and I, I understand the county doesn't have a lot as many angry people as I, as I've experienced in, in, in other, in other fields, but, um, what was that, Nancy?
Yet.
Yes, yeah, so, um, but yielding the floor to somebody, and if we, especially if you ask them what their name is and where they're from, or why they're here, you could get a whole list, a long diatribe about why they're here. If you say, where are you from, you could get someone saying from the part of, part of the county you don't care about, or, you know, it's, there, there's an opportunity when you yield the floor to someone, it's like at town halls, you always hold the mic when someone is asking their question of the person at the town hall, you don't give them the mic and then try and take it back. So it's, Board of Commissioner meetings are publicly accessible, they are the meetings of the pub, uh, uh, for the people, but they are the meetings for the board to discuss their business and to make decisions and, and things like that, and back and forths with the general public. Um, and, uh, it end up with, with issues and, and cuts that go on, online, um. So that's, I, I understand that there's a long tradition of introducing everyone at a meeting. I, I felt uncomfortable, I also felt very uncomfortable when I was sitting, attending a meeting and I wasn't an elected commissioner yet, uh, introducing myself, and like, what do I say? Do I say that I'm a candidate for county commission? Do I say that I'm a nominee? Do I say that I'm just here? How do I introduce myself to people? I just prefer to sit and watch. So, putting that out there.
Hey, get, so I, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I've always thought it's weird that we have everyone in the room introduce themselves, but I, you know, I, we just went with it, so I'm fine to not do that. Um, yeah, I'm fine to just say, yeah, if, uh, introductions, you know, up at the dais, staff in the room, people online. Um, yeah, what do you think, Pat?
Uh, couple thoughts, I mean, it, it, uh, adds some inclusivity to, to the meeting, the, the, uh, welcoming everybody, but I, I, I don't, um, especially when they're, occasionally when we have thirty people, I don't think that's the best use of of, of time, um, and, um, somebody that's gonna testify signs in, so we know who, who they are, so I, I think just for efficiency and, uh, like Commissioner Shepherd says, well, maybe people don't want to, uh, say who they are, and that's fine, um. Um, so, um, we, we do have staff mixed in with, um, uh, community members and, but, uh, if we say staff identify yourself, I think give that a try and see if that's better than how we've been doing it.
No, the other thing is, we don't necessarily need to introduce all of the staff that's in the room at that time. I mean, we could just introduce everyone up at the dais, and then as staff comes forward, I mean, they usually, we introduce who they are, or they introduce themselves and they get up to the um, the, the table, hot seat.
Hmm.
Um, so I, yeah.
I, I think that that, that makes the most sense to me, it's the most efficient use of time. We also then don't have um, like, non-director staff who are concerned about, do I, eh, am I important enough to be note, to say who I am in this meeting or anything like that, and, and eliminating that feeling of like, and if we skip somebody, it eliminates the awkwardness of, oh crap, we forgot this, this staff person and, and things like that, it's just when you come and talk to us, you tell us who you are. Um, so.
And the other thing is, when you're online, you cannot hear everyone in the room introducing themselves, and like, every meeting that people are introducing themselves, we get a chat in the comment that's like, there's no audio, so I think it can be confusing to people who are watching online.
So that is a great transition to my next one, which also is going to be controversial about the chat. Uh, so Public Records Law says that we have to retain the chat as a part of meeting record. We also technically need to retain direct messages between two individuals, cause that is part of the, the public record of the meeting. That's near impossible to do, because if two constituents uh, are direct messaging each other using the Zoom chat, that we have no way of capturing that. Um, so Zoom only allows us to download what, um, what the recorder sees, um, and, you know, people could download and send us stuff, but nobody's gonna do that. Um, so it, it's also, I today have already found it distracting to see a message pop up while we're having a conversation, and do I need to read this message? Am I identifying, like, speaking as a part of a meeting, you're having two separate things happen at the same time. If you're having chats and Commissioner Wise is chairing something, and someone chats and are, it feels like they're interrupting the, the chair discussing something, or the commissioner discussing something. So my personal preference, and again, I'm testing boundaries here, is I, I think that having the chat muted is a way to allow us to comply greater with Public Records Law, eliminates a distraction and, uh, feels less rude to me. And, you know, we might have pushback from people who want to chat at their county commissioners during the meeting, but that's not an appropriate thing to happen. You wouldn't allow someone to stand up in the back of the room and yell at us while we're, while we're conducting a meeting, they would be out of order. So the, I, I feel like it's the same thing, the same thing we would apply to the people sitting in the room should apply to the people who are on, online.
Yes, so I agree, I agree and I disagree with some of what you said, so, um, I agree that people who are putting chats in to tell us you know, inputs on our conversation, like, like public comment basically, um, are not considered as part of the conversation, I just ignore them, and we have said uh, that, you know, all this is a holdover from COVID, by the way, too, so it's sort of like evolved over time, here we are. Um, back when we were exclusively meeting online, we would get more comments like that, and it was explained over and over. No, you can't just comment like that, it doesn't quote-unquote count, we're not going to engage in a typed conversation with you back and forth. Um, it does happen on rare occasions still, and I just ignore it. Um, so I agree with you there that we should not let people just put in the chat anything they want at any time, like constituents, community members. Um, when it comes to me personally chairing, I find the chat helpful, um, because things like hey, so-and-so, you're not muted, you know, to try to avoid a potentially disruptive or embarrassing situation, um. Just, yeah, little, little bits here and there I find helpful, um. You know, like earlier, um, Shannon let us know that the, um, the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group was one of the ones we needed to add, we might have forgotten that one today if I had, if we hadn't seen that in the chat. Um, I think the, looking into the public records part about community member conversations, Gabe, that does sound like a consideration that we should look into. Um, also, I think, I mean, in practice, I feel like I'm usually the only commissioner that does have that is online and in the meeting at the same time, and my, and looking at the chat. Typically, the other two commissioners have not done that, but it's just up to personal preference and, you know, what you can manage during the meeting. So if, I mean, if you find it, um, distracting, can you just, can, you could close your chat maybe, or does it still pop up even if your chat is closed?
Uh, it pops up on the TV, so that's the, and, you know, today when I'm looking at you, uh, and talking to you, like, words keep popping up, un- un- have been popping up under you, and while I'm trying to talk to you, I'm like a little distracted by that. I don't plan on opening Zoom on my, on my computer um, during the meeting, but that does kind of lead into another part, and I, Pat's probably got thoughts about this, but I want to also talk about the type of Zoom we use as, uh, instead of webinar, we, we use this meeting, and what we, a solution to that is we could invite, we could, if we use webinar, invite staff to be panelists and they can send us messages, and that would stop the, uh, that would prevent extraneous chat from, um, from community members who's thinking that it's part of public comment. So.
I, I think, so I don't have all the answers here, so we might have to continue this conversation, but I feel like I remember that IT and staff worked a lot about trying to narrow down which version and why. And so I feel like there, there might be a good reason why we're using this, but I don't know what that is, so it's worth a, a continued conversation with A, with IT, I think.
Mm-hmm, great.
Um, I'm, I'm happy to weigh in a little bit on a couple of topics here. Um, one of the things with the chat, depending on what you all decide, uh, Zoom does allow us to turn off the feature where, that, uh, we can set it so that people can only chat to everyone. So we can turn off the ability for people to have this, uh, sort of side conversations. Uh, I know in the past staff has used the kind of side conversation to, oh, don't forget, you know, to mention this, or you know, some of those little just engagement kinds of things, but we can't turn that feature off, so if someone puts something in the chat, it goes only to everyone, they cannot chat, we can't, constituents can't chat amongst themselves. So that does then preserve the public record of the chat if you decide to continue chat. Um, regarding the webinar versus, um, versus the meeting option, uh, this did come before the board after our last Zoom bombing. Um, the board did authorize us to move to the webinar format if we felt that was the best um, from a security standpoint, while being sensitive to um, maximum transparency and ability for the public to engage. Uh, we did meet with IT staff on this particular issue. Their recommendation was to maintain the Zoom meeting format and implement a, a waiting room or, or as one component, so we do do that, we set up a waiting room and people have to, you know, enter their name, and they can certainly enter any name they want. Uh, but they have to take the step of requesting to be admitted, and then we hit the admit button for them. That's why, that's one of the things, when I'm sitting in the back, is, um, while Erica is recording the meeting, I'm admitting people if they request it. The second thing that IT asked us to do when they talk about the Zoom bombing is they explained how Zoom bombing happens. There's somebody at a computer with nothing else to do, but they've also, they've got some kind of a device, and please don't ask me to describe what it is. But what it does is they're, they've got a program that's literally scraping the entire internet looking for open meeting links.
Yep.
And it gathers them, and they are able to, at any given time, this device just blasts out pornography or whatever else they want to blast, so there's not necessarily somebody sitting there manipulating it. So they recommended that we, we used to make our, we used to publish our meeting link when we published the packet. Um, so we changed that, and so now we do not publish the meeting link until eight AM the day of the meeting. And we have something on the webpage for that event that says the Zoom link will be published at eight fifteen. So since we've done those two things, we have not had a Zoom bomb during a Board of Commissioners meeting, but it is still provided a little, yes. Certainly not, certainly not. We have not had a repeat incident. And it it seems to be working. That said, uh, the board did say, if you all as staff feel the webinar is the right way to go. Preserving as much accessibility to the public as possible, we're okay with that. Again, we follow these IT recommended steps, um, where our link is not out there. Until an hour before the meeting goes public, so that it's unlikely that it's going to be scraped. And then they, somebody has to physically request admittance to get into the meeting. So that's how we're operating at this time.
And uh, as far as the community, they're they're uh. We haven't had any complaints about, well, why don't you uh, publish your um, address the day before?
Because of things like this?
No, but have we had any complaints?
We have not. Um, it's. We have not had any complaints. Um, it is also, I think, important to highlight that our meetings are also live streamed on YouTube. So people, and those are the meetings where we have John Harris supporting us. Yeah, and that's generally our first, third and quarterly information sharing. Uh, which are the meetings that, you know, garner public interest.
Where we're deciding.
Where you're making decisions, correct? And that, that option, of course, doesn't require them to sign into anything. For our purposes.
And again, this was brought probably to goal setting. For the commissioners about six or seven months ago after a recent incident. So a lot of this, this new way of doing things is. Is still fairly new. And then the innovation of Civic Plus coming will, again, I think, help uh, a lot. Towards our goals of making these meetings a lot more accessible and understandable for folks to engage in.
You have something on it?
Just your uh, proposal on the chat and and um, I. Uh, like Nancy says, I I mean, I'm one of the ones that ignores it and. Uh, the the only downside to that is uh, getting. Somebody that's online and, oh, well, can't hear you or, I mean, and so I guess. How can we get that information without the, can that just go to staff? To the desk or uh, so that, uh, cause we all don't need that information. It's just. Uh, how to get that to, uh, somebody to let her know, uh, let us know that we have a little IT glitch this morning.
And is there a another way to to do with this is like, is there a way that we can turn off the chat? For the TVs, like for what's visible to the TVs, like so that we can disable the chat feature there just so it doesn't pop up? And um, just distract from that. So I.
Look at that. Okay. I don't know the answer, Gabe, uh, Commissioner Shepherd, so I will look at that and see if there's an opportunity for us to do that.
Cause my main, you know, my my main concerns about it are public records retention and just like. Side conversations that people aren't privy to and and. And that kind of stuff. So if we can find a way to work through it, that's great. I just, I don't want it to be a distraction to myself and to others. Um. Nancy, did you have a thing? It looked like you.
I was just gonna say, I think when we're sitting up at the dais, it's harder to see the chat. It's very small. So I just wonder if it's just more noticeable today, because you guys are sitting down at the, at the table. I don't want to speak to your experience, but. And I, you know, keeping in mind that you are young and your eyes are still very good, so.
This is, this is something I had written down before today, so that, you know, it's something I had experienced with before. Um, all right, my last one. And this is the, this is the big one, uh, is I I've spoken with everybody about this at some point, I believe. Is I think that the county should have one evening Board of Commission meeting a month. Um, I have a long list of reasons why I think it's important. Uh, I think that uh. There's a lot of people who work to traditional working hours, like almost everyone here here does. And having one meeting a month where they are, where they feel like they can come to a meeting, they can give comment. Um, I think that's important. I understand there's going to be a lot of conversations. Like if if this idea moves on at all, there's going to be conversations about staff time, about unions, about all all those kind of things. And I understand that. Um, I still think it's very important. Lots of governmental organizations. Have been able to accommodate an evening meeting. I started looking at um, other counties that do this. Uh, Clatsop County, even though partially because they're an unpaid board. Uh, they meet during the day and they have meetings in the evening as well, five and six PM. I think Washington County has one evening a month as well, or one one evening meeting a month as well. Yeah. So there's, it's not an unheard of thing. And I think it allows, yes, everyone who he who's here today is a professional. Who is in there, who's acting as a professional, including a professional, elected officials. Um, and there's uh, the fact that local government. Many local governments are unpaid. They have full-time jobs, means those are in the evening, but it also, the benefit of that is it means public has the chance. To use their evenings to go as well. It is hard. I'll speak to my experience here. It was hard to be someone who worked a full-time job to be able to attend county commission meetings. Watching them later, that's fine, but it's not the same thing as being able to be there in person, be able to give your in-person public comment. Be able to organize uh, thirty to forty people to show up and sit in. To uh, comment on something or to be present and show your presence. So I think an evening meeting a month. Is important, especially for our big ticket items like budget hearings. Like where we're gonna approve the budget, things where we want more people to attend. Um, I I think that it will be. It it would be good to have those meetings in the evening, so the general public can attend more. I've had. This, this came up a lot more than I expected when I was talking to people on the campaign trail of, I mentioned this. And people said, yeah, I've wanted to go to a county meeting, but I'm not up at nine, I'm on a Tuesday. Or I, I work at that time or a a list of other reasons. So. Um, and I don't, I definitely don't want to move all our meetings to the evenings. This meeting would be foolish to have in the evening. Uh, just doesn't make sense. Uh, but I think some big ticket items that the community really will want to weigh in on. I think we should have have, schedule some of those later in the day. I will accept your criticisms now.
Well, thank you for bringing this up, Gabe. I um, so I am always in favor of considering ways. That can expand public participation and public access. With decisions like these, you know, I always want to weigh the pros and the cons. And as you mentioned. We don't, we know what the pros could potentially be. We don't necessarily know all of the cons yet. I think Gabe, you mentioned union stuff and. Um, yeah, what is the staff impact? Um, you know, I feel as a commissioner, I have two jobs. One is to serve the public. The other is to try to make sure that our staff is. Well taken care of in whatever way that I can, that I'm not straining them too much. I'm not saying we can't do it. Uh, I'm saying there, there could be ways. We just might have to be inventive. You know, just speaking personally as a commissioner, I already have two or three nighttime meetings most weeks. Um, and then I also have two kids that both do two different sports. And so I have to choose, you know, which, which nights am I gonna miss my kid's stuff? Which nights am I gonna go? Um, which meetings am I gonna miss? So to add another meeting, um, that's just, just another consideration and I'm just one commissioner. If we were to consider this, I would, I would feel more comfortable not just saying, let's start with monthly meetings. I would be comfortable starting like a trial with like quarterly meetings. Like maybe we do four over the next year and I would propose maybe the second board meeting of the month, so like the third Tuesday. And see how that goes. Um. And maybe this is contingent on hearing back on what the, all the ins and outs would have to be to get staff to be able to. You know, host these meetings, put them on, come and attend. Yeah, I'll stop there and further discussion.
Okay, I got the thoughts. Um. I mean, some of our meetings, many of our meetings are pretty routine and I don't think we would get much uh. Uh, participation. Um, some occasionally we have hot topics and. I do have good interest and so I I um. Just off the top, I I'm not sure it makes sense to uh, do a rigid uh, schedule. Uh, versus uh. Uh, when we have uh, uh, large community interest in a topic and and then try to be. Uh, figure out the. Uh, best approach, but I I think I would ask our county administrator to do a cost. Benefit analysis. This is a theory. Uh, if we do a. Uh, evening meetings, we will get more uh, public participation. Um, and try to um, do a little analysis. So. So, we tried this in the past and I'm thinking of other. Uh, one in particular, LBCC thought it'd be because they have a large presence in two counties. Um, uh, be accessible to uh. Come to where the people live and I, I was, I was involved in setting up a meeting in RIN. And there were five or six administrators, including the president and. Counting me, there were three community members. So it was a good theory. Uh, and I don't think that was good use of uh, staff time. Um, and so uh, uh, and see. Uh, just like we were talking earlier about um. Uh, commissioners requesting information from staff, well, at at what cost? And uh, I think uh, this deserves some. Uh, review. I think we've probably talked about this in the, in the past and um. We've settled on like current structure, but um. Um, I think beginning of the year, it's good to examine practices and and uh. See what we can um, come up with, but um. Uh, try to figure out what what the benefits are and then at what cost and like has been mentioned, there may be. Uh, some union uh, contract considerations and and um. I'm sure there are other uh, uh, things that uh, aren't obvious right at first, so.
I have some thoughts. That's okay. Uh, first of all, I would like to propose putting up a survey, a county-wide survey. Uh, to the public to see what type of um, feedback we get on evening meetings and what would work as an adjustment. Uh, as well as I have to do some uh, internal polling as well with uh, my staff because um, as you know. A a big chunk of our workforce doesn't live in Benton County, so evening meetings I have to uh, focus on. We we have just. Uh, made offers to two folks in the, in the, in the, in the Board of Commissioners and um. Both questions for work, uh, work-life balance and what are, what is my work schedule? So um, that's why uh, you know, we have to have those um, discussions at the beginning. So I would like to um, to build capacity and increase uh, accessibility and transparency. To um, to these Board of Commissioner meetings. I believe in the past. And I look to the um, other two commissioners that you have had noon time meetings, three o'clock meetings. Um, I think there's a proposal in for our budget hearings to have three evening uh, times. Uh, after the presentations for folks to come in the evening where uh, that'll be scheduled in May. And then uh, Commissioner Shepherd and I had a nice discussion about it earlier and uh, he he made me kind of think about some things and. It's also the um, remote meetings that we haven't discussed on Hot Topic. So in the past. Um, you have participated in a Dara Village on uh, urban growth boundaries. Uh, in Philomen, the Philomen Museum. You went there and ran a meeting for the gravel quality expansion. And if I'm wrong, I apologize. You also have uh, visited the Corvallis High School Auditorium. Uh, to talk about the Oregon Forest Trust. So I I think like, especially those hot topic issues that Commissioner Shepherd talked about. Uh, to to have more engagement from the community, especially if it's affecting them in that area. Um, I think those are things that we need to identify as well, to be more accessible to folks. Uh, so when we use the word hot topics, it may be a regional uh, discussion that I think would be. Beneficial as well and evening would would make sense. So I'd be happy to put together um, a document and bring it back. For goal setting or, you know, we can look at it and and find those opportunities which make sense. Um, and then also, you know, I, not just the staff that work right around us, but uh, please factor in. Um, you know, I wanted to have an analysis of those who are representative and are presenting to a Board of Commissioner meeting in the evening. Those who don't, who qualifies for overtime, who doesn't, um, flex comp time, what, so I have a lot of uh, moving parts that worked. And then um, uh, and then also the tech issues that we want to be able to talk about and the uh, recording issues as well. Uh, not to throw anybody in the room, but you know, I, my, my recorder lives in Eugene. So you know, that that is a long haul um, for a late night meeting. So um, like. We have to like figure all that out. So I'm open to it and, but I also um. Uh, you know, I'm trying to build a workhorse of choice that shows flexibility, but we also have an obligation to make this as. Uh, as as accessible to folks as possible. And I think we've made some pretty good innovations the last two years. And I agree, like, we can make it easier for people to understand county government and how it works. But uh, we also, like, as you said, today would not be a very fun evening meeting to, to watch. Not that you guys aren't entertaining, but. Um, it 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 is important to know and I'm willing to also look at it as a case by case. Uh, measure. This is an important year with budget. We need to have the public have a lot of opportunity. To tell us what they think, so.
So uh, my response to this, I I appreciate everyone's at least openness to think about it.
Yeah.
Uh, and I would um, I would absolutely support you run an analysis, getting surveys, that kind of stuff. I think that'd be great. I I'm glad you mentioned something that I was concerned about, but. Um, making sure that the people, the staff that you survey, that you know whether or not they likely be attending a meeting at all. So like, you know, some of our front frontline staff likely wouldn't come to a. Uh, be required to come to a board meeting to present anything. So while their opinion on it is is valid and important to hear, it's less. It it would be less part of the logistics of of uh, doing the meeting. So I'm I'm glad that you mentioned that. Um, and to Commissioner Wise's point about quarterly, I'm open to, you know. I I'm open to to hearing about that and that being a part of the discussion because I I really think. And again, I'll, I'll end with, this was, came up a surprising amount to uh. When I was talking, talking to people, just people's inaccessible, in inability to attend. Regular board meetings because of o- other obligations. So um, I I'm interested to see what this returns. And again. Uh, I'll close this whole thing by saying, thank you all for like, giving me this time. I know it was uh. There was a lot to to get through and I had a lot of thoughts and ideas and I appreciate the, the grace that you gave to listen to them and consider them. Uh, and uh, I'm wrapping up Gabe's meeting time, so that's.
Thank you.
Well, one comment, uh, Rachel on the survey, uh, I think uh, it would be helpful. If uh. Uh, might even be a checkbox, but what topics are you interested in?
Yeah, that would be great.
Not, not just, are you interested in a vague county um, meeting, but what uh. Where where would you uh, pay attention?
Sure. And the chair and I and Sean and Maura were really talking about capturing those themes. At least in one meeting a month to try to gauge interests on on things that we. When things kind of come in front of us, because we get this long agenda. on on things that we, when things kind of come in front of us, because we get this long agenda and then we try to fit them into the to the schedule and how it fits if there is thematically an area where there were chunks that we were talking about transparency projects. So that will interest folks. If we're going to be talking about sustainability issues, like how do we cluster that resiliency? Thing, you know, housing and homelessness is if there's something that would be more that would capture people because you're right, you know, I'm not saying that our meetings aren't interesting.
Are there I guess specifically county meetings that Public Works is doing on a transportation project or I mean, it doesn't I think those ought to be listed also that we're in the community and it's for a specific topic and often those meetings are well attended. And seems like Public Works had a meeting in North Albany about the potential bike path and route and on some feedback. So I don't think this should be limited to just commissioner meetings.
Yeah, look, we have some exciting projects coming up this year. We have the Conference of Plan, which has a whole engagement piece that I would expect that all the commissioners will either like want to attend or get feedback on what's what's happening as well. So being able to identify opportunities where people can access their commissioners is going to be very important. I'm all for it. We can do that.
Well, it's maybe a little tangential, but it's something that's been floating around basically since I got here and maybe needs freshening up. I was thrilled when I first joined the board seven years ago that one of our first meetings, Joe Kirby says, we have too many meetings. Okay, this is a good start. And we did and developed a chart. If you have a meeting board, then how much staff time does that take? And when we think about adding meetings and I think we did a good job and Maura found two-year-old version meetings and a nice spreadsheet. And I would suggest sometime in the not-too-distant future, maybe take a look at that and freshen it up. And where this started was, it was just a ridiculous amount of hours, staff hours because of all the meetings we had. And I think we've done a pretty good job of getting that under control. But like I mentioned earlier, it's first of the year and maybe not a bad time to take a look. And it goes back to staff time and commissioners asking questions, asking questions and innocent questions and all that just took five hours. Being considered of staff and making sure that we're not asking too much and are there places we can be more efficient. Seems like a good good thing to do and that we now that we have this shiny new year to work with. Okay, we next up is Rachel's County Administrator Report.
I encourage folks, I know we're getting into the fourth hour if they do have meetings that are moving ahead. I'm not very exciting this month due to the holidays. We normally just kind of give an update, so I'll be super, super fast. I toured the DA's office and I got a tour of the Bell Tower in the historic courthouse. So I encourage you all, Ryan and I went up and climbed a ladder and really incredible views of the county. And it's just, it just reminds you what a special building that is and what happens to it in the future. So I really enjoyed that and really got to meet the team and I almost confidence in Ryan's leadership. And if you have any comments about the courthouse or they all have really neat spots to work out of. It's like the coolest little building. So.
It is an amazing building. I've spent decades driving past it to him from school and so forth over the years and was excited to come and work there 10 years ago. And I do have to chuckle when we have the earthquake month or whatever the advice be, get under your desk.
You could shake the courthouse.
Helpful that'll be. But it is amazing building. I do agree. And you're all welcome to come and take that same tour if you like.
Wonderful. I was honored. I got to attend the electives of two of our commissioners, as well as our district attorney and some of our judges. And then really, we spent some week and many of you were in meetings with federal and state meetings with our consultant CFM. Rick Crager can talk more specifically if you'd like to give a quick update of his activities. And we are interviewing communication coordinators. We have two people from the BOC staff that hopefully will be joining us. We have you know, offers out there. And then we will continue working on a community development director search. We are also working on budget and departmental goals and setting up a lot of meetings surrounding our annual budget. I also met with some community members like Marge Pop and went to the Valley City Managers and County Administrators Lunch Meeting in Albany. And of course, it was the holiday, so we took some time off as well. And not to reminisce that we also had some nice events around Commissioner Ogero's retirement. So it was a nice way to end the year and now we have a new year. So those are my updates.
And I just to take just a little bit of additional updates, one January 21st, the state legislative session was starting. So here we go. Buckle up. We will have CFM, our state representatives here next week to just give you a little preview, talk a little bit about what's going on, what to expect. I expect bills to start flying here pretty soon. And so again, Lindsay and I will work to coordinate that effort and work with our department heads to just do a lot of the the tracking. Segue into that, as Rachel said, Michael Skipper on the federal side was here last week. The purpose was really to start to engage with all the department heads. And really, as as you all know, we have the congressional delegated spending process, or as earmarks, as they like to call it, on, you know, what do we want to try to pursue? So I will be coming to you with sort of the results of all that discussion and what's the recommendations? Because we will have to put in applications as normal and as per policy, you'll need to approve those. So again, good discussions. I think Michael really got a lot out of it. It's always good to have have the feedback. Couple other things, I have rebooted the community development director recruitment that will open up on Friday. You all should have gotten a survey as long with as well as other community partners on just getting input that helps us inform the process that we will go through that will run for one month. We have interview panels and actually the meeting this afternoon to get those kind of set up and we'll be looking for parts participation from probably some or all of you in relation to that. Because as you know, you guys are usually involved to some degree within the excuse me, the director recruitment. Just also, your next goal setting, we will be coming forward to follow up on the housing subcommittee discussion. Should recall, December, we talked about the regional housing subcommittee of the Planning Commission and maybe endorsing that at a broader level because that scope has changed. So working with Ed Fulford will be back. But again, I know I had planned on coming in January, but in consulting with Rachel and Chair Wise, I just ran out of time and we just needed to have a little bit more time to vet that out. So more discussion coming.
You said February, sorry?
Yes, sir. February goal setting.
Thank you.
And last two items, enterprise permitting project, BOC sponsored project hasn't gone away. You know, we went through phase one of that, kicking off phase two this afternoon. So we'll want to be reporting back on how we use the rest of that investment that the Board of Commissioners put together. We have some really good recommendations, as you all heard from Mark Consultant back in November and that we'll get that flushed out this afternoon and be reporting back to you. And then the last thing, certainly not the least, but since I did bring it up at the last goal setting, I wanted to update you on the courthouse. I have positive, I'm in a much better mood than I was last month, I'm happy to say. We have gotten through SHPO, the Army Corps. We have a signed agreement on the demolition or excuse me, the deconstruction of the Swick House. As you know, that had to all go through and get a permit to actually do the deconstruct. We are done with that. The other thing I was panicked about was the easement that we had to get signed by the former property owner. That was signed very quickly, actually in record time. So at this point, everything is, all the boxes are checked. And it's just a matter of paperwork processing and getting everything through. I, again, find me some wood, but I am not anticipating anything else that would prevent us from getting through the permit process and being able to think about breaking ground. I don't have any specifics on that. We'll wait till Gary to come in to give you a report on that. The other thing you've heard me chirp a lot about is just always panicking about the tax exempt bonds. Greg and I have been talking about that with OTAC as you all know, there's a spending timeframe. We have some thoughts and ideas, but Greg and Greg Morphy is doing some validation on on an approach in relation to that. So again, more to come. Not as panicked as I was, but I'm still cautiously optimistic. So Greg Greg will help us to kind of get to the right place on that. And then we do meet with the Oregon Judicial Department, hopefully the long-awaited funding agreement. Again, we have all the funding secured. It's just we need the actual agreement to deliver the funds because we have been fronting all of that up to this point. So we have that this afternoon. Hopefully that is the final stages of that. So that's a quick of the major things.
Do you have anything to add, Greg?
I think they covered it all.
Since your name is mentioned prominently.
Just excited.
He's in a lot of meetings.
Appreciate it.
Last up on the agenda is commissioners' updates and if we can keep it to five minutes or less, I won't do a break here if that sounds okay.
Great. It was fun to go to all the swearing ins last week. It was a long week of seeing city councilors be sworn in and I made it to four of our five cities for their swearing ins. I send my regards to the Monroe City Council. I couldn't make it down there for theirs. I want to congratulate the newest Philomath City Councilor, Councilor Salsa. He got appointed last night to fill a vacancy that was that had been opened by the resignation of Councilor Matt Lehman, who got a job at the COG. So that's been a lot of what I've been doing recently and also wanted to let people know, Rick and I are meeting Wednesday to talk tomorrow, to talk about aid and assist dollars that I had mentioned before and that Zan had talked about. This is a conversation with the Justice Department or OJD. Get them all, all the alphabets together and Judge Donahue about aid and assist. So Rick and I are talking about what funding is available for that look here. This is, it shouldn't be something new to you all, but I wanted to keep you updated on that. And that's it. I'm very pleased. This has been a great first few weeks. So thank you for your for the support for the new guy.
Is that meeting tomorrow? Is that where you're sitting?
Yeah, with Rick and then the aid and assist meeting with the judge is on Friday. But oh, I will be at Commissioner County College this, starting on Thursday, Thursday through Saturday, which is in Corvallis. So within walking distance of where I live. So I don't have to go anywhere for that. But I will be technically out of the office Thursday evening through Saturday.
With Maura.
With Maura, yes.
Nancy?
Thank you. Question first, are we either one of you invited and or planning on attending the LBCC Legislative Breakfast tomorrow morning?
I was not invited, so I had not intended to go. So there you go.
I may have, I think I saw that several weeks ago and probably not attending, but
Okay, I was just asking because I had RSVP'd yes, but since I am still sick, I'm not going to go and share my germs. So I just wanted to see if either of you were interested in going instead of me. But if it doesn't work out or you're not interested, that is fine, too.
I will let you know if I can do that. But like you said, I think I saw that and it didn't fit very well, but
Great. I will email them and just let them know that I will not be there, but that I may, you know, send a substitute, may or may not. Does that sound okay? Let's see. So the Transportation and Community Development Steering Committee met on Friday, which I am a co-chair, but I literally had no voice on Friday, so I was not able to co-chair it, but I did work on the meeting and I think Commissioner Malone was there as well. They, through the Association of Oregon Counties, that committee voted to support what is now House Bill 3209, which includes RV registration fee proposals. It would raise it by, for the first time in 24 years, by $25 and it would result in an additional $1.5 million to county campgrounds and establish a new abandoned RV fund through RV registration and trip fees. When it got to the legislative committee, the legislative committee voted to send it back to the steering committee. And some of their concerns, one commissioner voiced very loudly that he himself owns an RV and that many commissioners do and that it's not fair to put that cost onto the people buying the RVs. It should be the cost of the person ditching them. Anyway, so we'll see if ALC decides to move forward with that or not. And then I think I had one more thing. Let's see. Basically, yeah, I've been sick and resting a lot, so I probably have less to report on this this time. I was asked to swear in the new NAACP officers, but again, since I had a got sick, I had to pass that on. All right. Well, I will end it there, Pat.
Hope you're getting better. You must be because you came into the office this morning. Well, I'll follow up at the Transportation and ALC Transportation and Community Development. Our own Sean McGuire made a brief presentation on the ASMB process, which I think is I mean, in theory, you're talking to the whole state and that's appropriate, but I was glad to see Sean's smiling face on Zoom call. There was also Scott Portman from ODOT gave a presentation on the Road User Fee Task Force trying to figure out alternatives to the gas tax, which is not adequate to keep our roads and bridges in in decent shape. And the trend is not in our favor as vehicles get better mileage. Gas tax, I think, works if the average is mileage is less than 20 miles an hour, 20 miles per gallon or 15 works really, really well and which in 1973 was the average. And so we've made pretty good progress since then and in nineteen seventy-three was, uh, the average. And so, uh, we've made pretty good progress since then and uh, uh, getting more efficient vehicles, but it, it's, um, and, and there will be serious discussion in the legislature on a transportation package with probably the theme of, uh, operation and maintenance, not, not the sexy stuff like building a new bridge, uh, that's in our backyard and, but, uh, uh, doing a better, better job of, uh, taking care of, um, uh, what we already have, uh, Ag and Natural Resources Committee, uh, uh, really nice presentation. Uh, Rep Helm, uh, Democrat from the Portland area and Rep Mark Owens, Republican from uh, Willa, I believe, Willawa County. Uh, kind of, uh, co-chair the, uh, water committee and, uh, I think it's a nice example of, uh, different geographies, different parties working together to solve uh, common problems. And I got a chance to thank Rep Helms in person yesterday. Uh, I got to attend the um, opening of the legis- legislature and, uh, um, Governor Kotex State of the State, um, uh, address, so. Uh, I, I think, uh, I'll continue with the legislative theme. Um, last week I toured uh, Dan Whelan, who is Val Hoyle's, um, staff person, uh, who is uh, tapering out of that, uh, position, um, and, um, Molly McGuire from Wyden's office of, uh, toward the Jackson Fraser um, boardwalk wetlands, uh, project and, uh, as always, very positive uh, response. It, it, it didn't hurt that it was a sunny day and, um, and, um, had, had a nice uh, tour. The advice was, uh, figure out, uh, how to get, um, Representative Hoyle to actually tour the uh, the site and, and see how it fits, fits in the neighborhood and, uh, uh, kind of reinforce the the ear, potential earmark for that, uh, to, to, uh, address the funding, uh, gap in that, uh, um, very worthwhile, uh, project that, that I think is uh, bubbled to the top of our, uh, priority list for funding and, uh, either from the, uh, state or the, um, federal level. Uh, I guess last thing, um, after the, uh, meeting at the legislature, there was, uh, in, invitation to Mahoney Hall and the governor's kind of a nice, um, fairly intimate, uh, meet and greet and, uh, I got a, a chance to talk one-on-one with the governor about our behavioral health, um, mental health crisis center and grand opening and it should be nice if you were, uh, I came down and, and saw what we were up to and, uh, she was, she and her scheduler were very receptive to that, so I need to kind of coordinate with you, Rick, and see what kind of, uh, make sure we follow up on that. Uh, the, the other part of the discussion was difficulty in finding, uh, qualified counselors to staff it. Uh, at this point, the building's in pretty good shape, but we need and, and, uh, she was aware of, uh, maybe excessive requirements for Oregon counselors compared to other states. And so I think there may be some uh, legislative remedy, but it, it was, uh, holiday time with the governor, uh, one-on-one, just happened to, uh, I, as I walked in, told her I had, had a issue I wanted to talk about. So why don't we go back here and, um, had a nice, uh, conversation. So on, on that high note, I will end and, um, did you have a question, Rick?
Um, no, I, I just, uh, I failed to mention, uh, in our report that, uh, Lindsay has been able to get all the legislative breakfast for the session scheduled. Um, all invites are out. Uh, I'm getting actually a lot of feedback from all the folks and, and they're excited about it. Um, I think as we've talked about as, as a group, we'd like to maybe, uh, freshen this up a little bit to maybe look at agents and directors, particularly like ODOT and others that might be able to join, particularly if you go into the session. Because a lot of times you don't get, um, members. So again, more information to come on that, so.
Courtney Flathers from Governor's Office.
And then, uh, the other thing that is, is I think important to know, Rachel knows this and I knew this, this day, day was coming, uh, sadly, but, uh, I always try to avoid it. Um, we'll have some changes in our Board of Commissioners office. Uh, Lindsay Goodman has announced she will be leaving the county. Um, and, um, I think most of you know, uh, what she means, uh, to all of us, to me, especially in terms of the work that she has done. Um, now that I've finally got out of my depression, uh, over the last thirty days, you know, now looking forward from the standpoint is when people leave, there is also opportunities. So Rachel and I are talking a lot about how does those gaps fill? You know, there's administrative need, but there's a lot of other project type stuff. I think you all are aware that Lindsay gets involved in, so we're going to be brainstorming on figuring out how to best staff that going forward. So again, just wanted to let you know, uh, don't have a speci- uh, I will say sometime between mid-February and the end of March, uh, she's in the process of relocation, but she's given me permission to at least share with you at this point, uh, that, that is happening, so.
We haven't even got her in, into.
I know, and that was part of it was knowing that this was probably an inevitable, uh, situation, um, that was, was going to.
Did she have an exit date?
Uh, e- exit date again is I haven't named it yet. I keep, uh, telling her that selfishly, maybe hoping that maybe something will change. She remind, she reminds me that's not going to happen, Rick, but, uh, certainly, uh, you know, uh, we'll, we'll try to leverage her as much as we can. Um, there'll be some things we'll need to hand off. And she's involved in the sustainable man, uh, materials management, uh, plan. Obviously legislative stuff, uh, we'll need to figure out how to kind of backfill a lot of that. So anyway, we have some time. I'm going to say anywhere between mid-February and first part of March. Sorry, I didn't mention that.
And, uh, Lindsay, notwithstanding when I'm talking to elected agency people, I, I am, um, genuinely excited about this year and, and the people we have in place to for, uh, to move Benton County forward in, um, whether it's the, uh, governor or, um, somebody from ODOT, uh, come on down and see what we're, we're up to, but, uh, so, we have a lot of, uh, big projects in the pipeline, but, uh, I, I don't think we're planning on rescinding our laurels and, uh, that we're going to continue to, uh, keep moving forward and exciting times in Benton County and you, you, you really should come down and see this, so.
Good stuff.
On that, on that note, any, anything else? Well, uh, we, we did it.
We did it.
Slightly over schedule, um, beyond, but, um, good stuff. Meeting in Germany.
Thank you.